Okay, we're going to continue on with our meeting. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. On Wednesday, May 1st, I had the opportunity to attend an event called Day on the Hill. That was, that is an event sponsored annually by the Massachusetts Association for School Committees. It's a, it's basically a morning at the State House of speakers. We heard from Representative Paul Tucker, who's the Vice Chair of the House Committee on Education, and Senator Jason Lewis, who's the Chair of the Senate Committee on Education. And we heard a great, a great presentation by State Auditor Suzanne Bump. You probably received in your inbox this morning her April 2019 report, Students in Foster Care. There are about 6,800 students in foster care who attend public schools in Massachusetts. And her recommendations in that report include improving communication between districts and the Department of Children and Families. They are proposing something like an electronic backpack, so to speak, so that districts will understand where the student has been and what their needs are, to provide some professional development to educators so that they can meet these, the needs of this population. And she calls for state, the state to fully fund districts for the cost of transportation and education of these students. So it's worth taking the time to read her reports. Her 2017 report on the structure and finance of mass regional schools is really a must-read for school committee members everywhere in the Commonwealth, so highly recommend it. That was followed by lunch. Lunch was catered by, I think it was like 23 different voc tech culinary students. It was unbelievable. The food was just unbelievable. It was really something. And then you could spend the afternoon visiting your, your state legislators. So next year, I really, I want to propose that, that we set aside some time to, to do some outreach to our student reps at the high school. Students are invited, and you can make appointment with your legislator, legislator, and, and have them come and ask questions. It's a really fantastic event. It was the first time I'd ever gone, so I wanted to share that with you.
Excuse me one second. Excuse me, Beth. Is there a way to turn the volume on, on the microphone?
It might be the, hold the microphone, sorry. It's my bad.
Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. We have Boxborough elections coming up on the 21st, so if you're from Boxborough, please go out and vote. And tonight is the final school committee meeting for Mary Brolin. Can't believe it. I have a little speech planned, so I will go first, and then if anyone else who wants to say something, please feel free to do so. Mary has committed 11 years to school committee work, six here on the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee, and before that, five on the Boxborough School Committee. And she was really instrumental in unifying three districts into one regionalized, what we are now, pre-K through 12. So the, the Acton Public Schools, the Boxborough Public Schools, and the regional high school. She did a lot of work on that. She was on the regionalization subcommittee, the transitional policy subcommittee. She was on the budget subcommittee for, for years here. Took over the, as a school building committee chair. She coordinated the site visits for superintendent search. It's in, and did it effortlessly, just incredibly organized and just attentive to every detail. She sat on the Health Insurance Trust, the OPEC Trust. The first conversation I had with her was about something called Egg Whip. So I was like, eggs? Really? It turns out that's, it's a subsidy that the federal government provides for prescriptions. But she, it was, she just took the time to, to sit and educate everyone. She brought her knowledge to bear, her expertise on mental health and substance abuse as a PhD scientist and lecturer at Brandeis. She's a, she's a, on the top of everything else, a Boxborough Library trustee, active in her, in her church, on mission, went on mission trips. Her husband, Chris, volunteers with the Blanchard popcorn players and is on the ABSAF board. Her children were in elementary school, right, when, when Mary started on school committee, and one is now, is she a sophomore in college? And the other one's graduating? She's a junior. Okay. So Mary has really been a model of the, the acuity, the acumen, and the savvy that comes from being deeply engaged and deeply informed and fiercely committed to school committee work. When I asked her how she felt about retiring her seat, she said, "My husband will be happy to have more of me, so we will be sad to have less of her, but I'm happy for her that she will have more time." And I, I just can't say enough about how much I appreciate your, your commitment to school committee work.
So I was around for the beginning of Mary's service on the regional school committee, and then I took a little break. But I came back in time to see, you know, the most recent service that Mary has provided to the, the school committee. And since Diane had a rather comprehensive list of the things that Mary had involved in, I, I just wanted to focus on the fact that, obviously, some people come to school committee meetings and they think of this as the work of the school committee. But as Diane's list shows, much of the work of the school committee goes on in meetings that are, shall we say, lightly attended. You know, and this year in particular, where Mary has been, you know, both the Chair of the Building Subcommittee and the Health Insurance Trust, she's worked so tremendously hard. And obviously, you know, every group needs people who work very hard. And as Diane said, we were just so fortunate to have Mary helping us this year. Thank you.
Amy. Well, I mean, I couldn't possibly begin to say enough about Mary. But you have been such a source of knowledge and support, and taught me so much about, I'm not going to go into detail. You've just taught me a lot, and been an incredible support and an incredible mentor through some really tough things. So thank you so much.
So it's been a pleasure, Mary. You know, I, I think every year that I've been on the committee that, that you've been on is, I feel kind of like an apprenticeship. And I just shudder to think that the training wheels are coming off.
Oh, I thought you were mentoring me.
Tessa.
So I won't forget the first time that you and I sat down to talk about the potential of school committee. And I went home and I was like, "I don't know, Nate." But you have been kind and supportive and always given me knowledge when I needed help understanding something, and given good advice about handling, handling things, and giving me a pat on the back and saying, "You can do it." As you will, like every day until we get through my presentation at town meeting. But you've been, you know, a, a help that can't be described. And I'm so lucky to have joined a committee with you on it, to have such a nice, a great, wonderful informational mentor that, you know, it's just, it's the art words to describe it. So thank you.
And as a token of our appreciation, Mary, we have flowers and a chair for you.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to say that it's absolutely been my pleasure and my privilege to serve Boxborough and Acton and the Acton-Boxborough School Community. You know, I brought my Kleenex, because I knew it was going to happen. This is an amazing organization, working with the school committee members here and the previous members I've worked with, with the administration, the teachers, the students. You're just all amazing. And I think, you know, we had some rocky times and certainly some things I could have done better, and I regret the turbulence I caused, but I see a vision for the district going forward that is so exciting. We have, we have a really academically strong school district, but what I see going forward with Peter's entry plan and the things he identified, they're tough issues that, that you all are going to tackle, but it's going to make a learning environment where I, I'm hoping that students have a joy of learning, not just that they're learning, but it's a joy that they take with them through their careers and their lives. And I really see we're on the cusp of that. So for anyone in the audience who's thinking about school committee, this is a great time to get on and to get involved in any way with the district. I think there's just wonderful things going forward, and I'm not going too far if you'll have me still on the school building committee. So thank you all. And Beth, absolutely, you are amazing for the school committee, and all the support you give to us is just outstanding. So thank you.
Thank you. It is my pleasure this evening to welcome the Acton-Boxborough Student Activities Fund. I'm going to turn it over to Peter.
So we are very excited to welcome the Acton-Boxborough Student Activities Fund with their annual donation that they give to the school district. I have to say, as a new superintendent to this district, this is an absolutely incredible organization that provides just unparalleled support to our students and their pursuit of really being able to engage in all of the different activities that this district is able to provide. You know, I think Mary said it best when she said, you know, "Education is really about the joy of learning." And we know that students who engage in these activities are pursuing them because it's something that brings them joy. So I think having an organization that's dedicated to providing these types of opportunities is just so aligned with the central core values that we have as a district. And I'm just so thankful on behalf of all of the district, our staff, and all of the students who may not be in attendance tonight. I'm not sure if every one of you is here, but really just thank you so much for all of you, all that you do. I believe at this point, and I'll defer to Marie because she has a little bit more history. We actually have you up to do the presentation, so we'd like to invite all of you up. And I don't know if you'd like to say a few words?
We've got a few words. Too many. First of all, I, thanks for having us here tonight, and congratulations to you, Mary, and thank you for serving the community. Your colleagues had some amazing things to say about you, and we just want to wish you the best of luck. So hi, everyone. I'm Linda Ahern. I'm the current president of the Acton-Boxborough Student Activities Fund, and I'm joined by just a few of our student board members. We actually have over 20 student board members and 18 adult board members that serve on the board. I think most of you are a little bit familiar with us, and it is a board in the community that is comprised of adults and students. Our goal is to raise money to support all extracurricular activities at the high school and the junior high school. Like your mission, I mean, we truly believe that the activities help promote a healthy lifestyle, and whether students choose sports or performing arts, or the theater, or after-school clubs, they all play an important role in our students' lives. So each student volunteer serves the board for a two-year term. They attend our monthly board meetings, they fundraise at sales events, they participate in our phone-a-thon, they're involved in writing our newsletter, they manage our social media pages, and they do all this while going to school, taking classes, and enjoying their own activities. So I want to introduce, first of all, because there is just a small group, I'm going to introduce everyone. I have Hannah Dennison, who's a sophomore, first-year board member, Grace Fitzgerald, who's her second year, she's a senior, Sam Ahern, second year as a sophomore, Lizzie Kirkman, first year. And then I have our incoming president, Jim Kirkman, and incoming vice president, Brian O'Connor, and I think a few others in the audience. So Hannah Dennison, I'm going to talk about our speakers a little bit. Hannah is a sophomore, as I said, first-year board member. Hannah jumped right in, and she's helped us with sales events. She's been kind of my liaison to the students to make sure that we have good communication, and she's done a great job at that. She's also involved in the crew team, and we really appreciate all that she's done for the board this year. Grace is our other speaker tonight, and Grace is a senior. She's finishing her second year on the board. She's headed to Fordham University in the fall, and we are really lucky to have Grace also serve on this board. Both of them are always willing to pitch in and help out, and even tonight, they were the two that volunteered to speak. So I'm going to pass it over to Hannah first. There we go. You're welcome.
Each year, ABSAF board members work within our community to raise funds for the AB Regional School District. The gift room at ABSAF is used to support extracurricular activities, including athletics, theater, performing arts, academic clubs at the high school and junior high. We are happy to say that ABSAF funds have been allocated to new uniforms and equipments for the athletic teams, instruments for the band, supplies for the athletic academic teams, transportation, project graduation, and support of Presidium Circus, to name just a few. You will soon see the new stage curtains at the high school auditorium and the scoreboard in the high school fieldhouse, which were also made possible through ABSAF gifts. Our fundraising is done throughout the year through an email campaign, a direct mailing effort, a social media presence on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and the ABSAF newsletter. That's in its second year, and finally, our annual phone-a-thon held on two nights in the fall.
Hi, everyone. It is our goal to contribute to activities at the high school and junior high that promote a healthy lifestyle for the students. It is our hope that through our efforts, we are able to offset the cost to participate in these activities and also reach as many students as possible with our donation. We are grateful for the opportunities at the high school, and as ABSAF board members, we are proud to give back. It has taken the effort of the entire board throughout the year to make this donation possible. We're also very thankful for the community, for the donations that they have given to support our students in this gift. ABSAF has donated well over $1 million since it was created in 1981, and tonight, on behalf of the entire ABSAF board, we are proud to present the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District a check in the amount of $70,000.
Thanks, everyone. You know, I just, I'm going to also, we talked about the newsletter, and we just put out our third one this year, so I'm going to pass around a couple of copies. So you see, this is, this was student-driven, designed by Kate Mehlender, and several of our students wrote the articles within. So just a little snapshot of AB students. Thanks for having us. And we'll sit down and wait for the vote.
Stay for one sec.
Yeah. We're going to sit down for the vote.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion to approve?
To approve with gratitude.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so, so much. Okay. If there's anyone in the audience who, who would like to speak to us, this is the time in our meeting where we open the podium to public participation. This is for items not on the agenda. If you wish to speak to us, this is your opportunity now. And I'll just ask you to state your name, your town, and you do have a two-minute time limit. Thank you.
Okay, opening two minutes. It'll start right now. Steve Ballard from Boxborough. I would like to thank Mary Brolin, like you did, from my town for her service on this committee and the wonderful thing she's done. I've been critical, but now's not the time to criticize. She did a great job, and she still is for our school district. I had three things that I wanted to ask for this new fiscal year that's coming up, and I'm not going to get to all of it, but I want this school district and the school committee to try, Madam Chair, and members of the committee, especially you, to respect the law, respect the truth, and respect your own principles, as you've agreed upon. We'll talk a little bit about law today, something I know about. And it's not just open meeting law, which thankfully, another thing, thanks is due to this committee for doing such a great job in the district in this fiscal year in improving on open meeting law compliance in a, in a huge way. But there are ethics laws, state laws and regulations, public records law, other things that are important as well. I think it's important now for someone to check members of the staff who are also on committees in the Acton Town Government. You know, for conflict of interest purposes, there's the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee, the community ed directors on that. There's the West Acton Sewer Advisory Committee, and JD Head is on that. And I understand part of the reason for their membership is to give some representation on the district. But sometimes there are issues that come up, like a possible high-tech septic system for the new building project versus a sewer system in Acton, and maybe people in Acton want schools district to help pay for that, or, you know, that, you know, it's a, it's a concern. And so maybe JD Head, involvement on the committee was not a problem before, but maybe it is now. And then the other case, Kelly's Corner, there are people recently who've spoken about a YMCA or rec center on the Kmart parcels. That was an issue at the last town meeting. Maybe the community ed director's membership on the committee is vital, but on the other hand, maybe now there's some potential conflict of interest between, you know, community ed activities that are recreational. So it's just something to look at. Maybe there's, you know, some disclosure statements need to be made. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to invite Michael Chang, our student rep. So I'm going to invite Michael Chang to the podium. He is our school committee rep.
First, just quickly, I think I recognize that this is probably the most students I've seen at a meeting in my three, four years covering there, for whatever reasons, multiple reasons, but yeah, that's great. It's probably fitting, though. There's a lot of things, this is probably, I think this is the longest layoff we have this year, so there's a lot of things and things that are pertinent to this committee in particular that's been going out at the high school, so much that I didn't even get to mention Presidium Circus's show that wrapped up last weekend. Well, there, I just did it. The biggest thing on the agenda probably is that seniors that have an internship scheduled with Senior Seminar, it's a program we have, I think about 30 percent, Mr. Dory has the actual numbers, but I think 30 percent of seniors have an internship, and they had their last day of school last Friday. They, last Thursday, actually, last Friday was their Senior Community Service Day, which I believe has been FYI. And that's just an annual thing that's been going on, and seniors sort of disperse, if you will, to community organizations and help out for the day. But yeah, and regular graduation, I believe, is coming up too, in two, three weeks. Also, this week and next week is APs. It's, it's determined that when, APs, the timing is determined by the College Board, so as much as I'd like to say for Mr. Light's end-of-year goals and Mr. Dory's school improvement plan, I have an AP in tomorrow, so I'm skedaddling. More pertinent to this committee, we have various surveys that have been conducted. For example, there was the Challenge Success Follow-Up Survey that was conducted maybe early last week or thereabouts, that I believe have been, we talked about in this committee already, but that was administered to all high school students and as well as some other more minor ones, with our being, I think there was a recycling one, and there was one regarding start times. And also, there were, student elections were held the first week after April vacation, and I'd just like to make a note that the terms technically start in September, but your new school committee reps will be, along with myself, junior Caroline Browning, sophomores Charles Wang and Justin Wu. And thank you very much.
Okay, we continue with the superintendent's update.
All right. We have a fairly lengthy agenda tonight, so I'm going to keep this one brief. You know, first, I just want to congratulate some of our students here at the junior high school. For the first time ever, we had three students participate in the Special Olympics, which is absolutely a fantastic organization, and I think one of the most important organizations we have around the country. I'm so proud that we were able to have these athletes represent us, and I just want to thank two of our staff members who got this going for us. They're both physical therapists, Anne Dempsey and Mary Ann Beardsley. So thank you to those two staff members. What an incredible opportunity for our students, and I hope this is the first of many, many, many years to come. Second, I, I'm putting out what we call a shameless plug. I want to, as much as I want to update you, this is more for our families. We need more families to complete our Challenge Success surveys. We have a goal of having 50 percent of families complete these surveys to give us a good sample size. We're currently at a little over 30 percent between the junior high school and high school families, so we are sending out the links in this update so that families can engage with that survey. So if you're at home watching, because I heard the other day that many people do watch from home, please fill out the survey. And then finally, I, for the students in the audience, I will announce that June 19th is officially our last day of school. So I had a nearly perfect run of no snow days. I, I told you, I wrote it in my contract, so there must have been some legal loophole. I don't know what it was. I said it shall not snow in Acton or Boxborough for the duration of the time I'm here. I don't know what happened. Someone didn't follow through. It couldn't have been me. But we had a good run. We had one snow day, so it is June 19th, and we are sending specific information out to families within the next few days. And it's also included in your packet, I believe. So thank you, and I will turn this back to Diane.
Onto new business. We have five reports tonight, so I'm just going to start inviting people up to the podium. And the first, the first one up to the podium will be Dana Lab and Jen Campbell to present on Blanchard's School Outdoor Learning Space.
Thank you. As I've been reminded of more than once tonight, I can be somewhat long-winded, so I'm going to do the short version of an introduction. First, I want to thank Mary for your service. You're going to be missed. Congratulations in your new phase, and come to our school anytime, visit, hang out. Thank you for everything you've done. I'm excited to be here tonight, this evening, to share our Blanchard Outdoor Learning Plan and our plan for nurturing this aspect of our school culture. As school leaders, outdoor learning is the best avenue we have found to cultivate a learning community filled with joyful, resilient teachers and students. As we look to continue this initiative, we are focused on engaging with families, building staff capacity, and importantly, developing a campus to support this work. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Jen Campbell. She is a Blanchard parent. She has been extremely invested in our school's outdoor learning. For the past year, she has partnered with Lemonbrook to develop a multi-year plan, making our school campus a place that promotes equity and access for all. Lemonbrook has been generous in offering times for faculty, staff, and families to engage in discussions about developing the outdoor learning plan. Give you some examples. In October, there was an optional lunch and informational feedback session that all staff attended. In October through January, to help support that work, there were idea boards that were put into the staff room, and folks were able to give feedback throughout the process. In February, there was another presentation at a staff meeting with a follow-up question and answer session, and some schematics that we looked at. And then in March, we had a community forum for parents where we presented preliminary drawings, and we received feedback on that as well. We believe that by increasing accessibility of our physical spaces at Blanchard and providing inclusive opportunities for outdoor education, we will better welcome all members of our community and reinforce the district's values of equity, wellness, and engagement. So without further ado, Jen Campbell.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having us here. So first, I want to start with why is outdoor learning important? Studies overwhelmingly show the positive impact on a child's wellness, both physical and cognitive, from being outdoors, and this includes natural schoolyards and outdoor classrooms. Natural schoolyards can improve academic outcomes. They help kids focus and regulate behavior. They enhance attitudes, and they support critical thinking, creativity, and problem-solving. Outdoor environments also inspire children to be more physically active, which in turn increases physical wellness. And consistent exposure to nature decreases stress and anxiety, helps elevate mood, and helps with emotional regulation. And these are all things that the district and our Blanchard community are actively trying to work on. So what makes outdoor learning successful? If you look at the published studies that have researched what makes an outdoor learning program work, you will find three things. So what makes it successful, meaning what sustains it, what engages students, and what provides those cognitive and physical benefits that I just mentioned. The first two are school support and community engagement. In short, administrative buy-in and curriculum support, both of which Blanchard already has. And the third is design. So like a house, an outdoor space needs a design plan that will meet the current and future needs of all of their students, and that is based on research and staff, administrative, student, and community feedback. Of all the factors to success, this was the one piece that Blanchard was missing, and it was what led to the outdoor learning plan. So what were the goals of the plan? The goals are plentiful. Formulate an achievable long-term plan for the outdoor space, create a give-back list for volunteer projects, and protect the existing habitat, which around Blanchard, if you don't know, is beautiful wetlands and forestry. Most importantly, we wanted to increase accessibility and inclusivity of the space and provide the staff the tools that they would need to make outdoor learning successful. And so we did this through teacher surveys and multiple workshops, which Dana just mentioned. And the staff goals of the Blanchard Outdoor Learning Plan were defined. The staff The staff wanted multiple defined spaces that could be used for a variety of activities with easy access from the building. So last year, the PTF funded the hiring of Lemonbrook, a landscape architect based in Concord, to design the plan. And I believe you guys all have a copy of the current plan in your packet, so I'm just going to briefly highlight a few things. Things like a built-in hillside seating for a class or a large outdoor assembly for the entire school on a piece of property that is already frequently used by classrooms. Improvements to the current outdoor classroom, like extending the overhang and providing additional storage. A small boardwalk and a set of rubber mounds in the kinderlot to improve imaginative play and gross motor development. But the gems of the plan really reside in the back of the campus. The plan includes an accessible and inclusive boardwalk that would extend over the wetlands. This boardwalk could be used for a classroom as a learning tool, but also as a space to allow children to practice calming down and working on emotional regulation. The playsuits are also addressed in the plan and include additional swings, an inclusive basket swing and a merry-go-round, all of which are fantastic tools to help children develop their vestibular and proprioceptive senses. Lastly, the entire plan was designed to be accessible, so this would mean that all current and future children would be able to access all of the wonderful features I just mentioned, which currently is not the case. And these two images are actually 3D renderings from the landscape architect. The top one is a 3D rendering of what the plan could create in the rain garden area and meadow area, and then the bottom is the 3D rendering of what the boardwalk could look like going over the wetlands. So now I would love to answer any questions that you guys might have. Yeah, sure.
So first, I just want to thank you, Jen, for all of the work that you've done. You've been an incredible leader for this project and really bringing something that's a passion of that school to the forefront, so thank you. For the committee, I just want to provide a little context. This presentation originally was designed as an informational-only presentation for you because this group is ready to begin publicizing this work around the community in Boxborough, and we wanted to make sure that you understood what was happening for the school prior to beginning to be publicized. However, and as you'll see later in the packet, there was a memo to you around two donations or potential future donations. The way the school committee procedures are written, it's the superintendent's authority to approve fundraising activities, but it's the school committee's authority then to accept the donations that can result from those. I saw there are two large-scale donations that are, you know, potential to come before you in the near future. This is one, and then we have an athletic donation as the second one. I thought it was a bit disingenuous if I was to approve fundraising activities for something, that you didn't have a sense that you wanted to then accept the gift. It seemed a little bit backwards, so I wanted to bring this before you and actually ask for your authorization to proceed with that fundraising, knowing that that would come later as a gift to you. So that will be a vote later in the meeting.
Jenny, did you want to, did you have a question?
Yes. Go ahead. I'm so, thank you for coming. I'm so excited about this. And I wanted to ask you if you know that next Monday night, the author of the book, Barefoot in Balance, is coming.
Yeah, I do. I think I actually sent the link to Dana when I saw it. I saw her present last year when she came through the same council.
Yeah, it's telling me that my girls are through elementary school now because I think this is wonderful and I hope it expands to our other elementary schools because it's fantastic. So thank you.
Paul?
Just a comment. Outside Magazine had a feature article on pediatricians prescribing outdoor activity rather than medication in certain cases. And so I think this is very timely, so that, you know, when the, you know, American Medical Association or significant group of members recognize the value of outdoors, this is very timely, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Adam?
I have one question and one comment. I'll start with a question. I was happy to hear that you included so many diverse groups in the, sort of, the development of this. Was the Boxborough Fire Department included because I know that there's a lot of concern about being able to plow and have access around the building?
Yes, both chief from the, chief and captain from the fire department have both come over at separate times, do walks around the building and look at the plans.
Excellent. Thank you. And then, and my comment, of which there are two, the first one is I'm really happy to see that the program is not only going to be accessible but also inclusive. I think it's important that there's not just access for everybody, but everyone feels included in that. And secondly, just having come back from chaperoning the fifth-grade nature's classroom trip that Blanchard had, there were a number of times where the students said to me, I wish school could be like this all the time. So I'm really happy to see that we're going to get a little bit more of that. Thank you.
Mary.
I also am in huge support of this. I think we have this gorgeous landscape and we should be using it, but also what an educational tool and with all the environmental issues in our world to be educating our children at such a young age and having them love the environment so that they'll be really committed. So I thank you for all your leadership on this and I fully support you approving this. Yeah. Thank you.
And I just want to add that, this got me curious, so I looked at schools that do outdoor learning or have that educational component built into like their philosophy. So I found like the Burches School in Lincoln and Merrill Hawk in Newburyport, and I'm wondering if there, the educational benefit of the model that you envision for that space includes drawing from different models like these two schools.
So when Jen first joined Blanchard as a parent, I went over to ITC because she was raving about all the things they were doing outdoors. So we got a lot of our initial ideas over the last couple of years from starting at ITC. Since then, Lee and I, who's in the audience, have written a proposal to present on outdoor learning in the summer for some sessions, various places, but also we've had some inquiries from other schools about how to involve outdoors into their learning. And so going to look at those spaces and help them try to figure out how to get outside more. So we're really lucky to have the space that we do, but even just finding a little piece of green area to start bringing our lessons outside is a great start.
Anything else? Thank you. Okay, I'm going to invite Andrew Shen and Dawn Bentley to the program, to the podium to present Effective School Solutions, the junior high school, a proposal for the junior high school.
I'm just going to give a quick introduction, talk a little bit about process. You know, we have an extended, prolonged budget process, and through that budget process, we proposed a series of social-emotional learning supports for our students, and we presented you with a lot of data around the various needs of our students and increasing issues around mental health. Since that time, you know, we've continued to look at student profiles and in particular, we studied the transition process from sixth to seventh grade and some of the needs of students who we foresaw on the horizon, and also took a look at some of the needs of some of our existing students whose needs at this time were actually exceeding our ability to support them. And we took a hard look at ourselves and what we could continue to do. And so Dawn is going to introduce a presentation to you. This is something that we are coming to you tonight. It is, should have been through the budget process, but the timing just didn't allow that. We were not aware of some of the specific needs that we would be identifying at this time. So we're coming to you with a proposal to do a pilot program for one year of what you'll hear next, with the understanding that if we deem it to be successful, this is something that would be included in future budget processes. I'll let Dawn take it from here and talk you through what we're talking about tonight.
Thanks, Peter. So we have a couple of things we're going to run through tonight. We're going to talk a little bit about sort of where we are. I'm actually going to update you. Some of these slides will look familiar. You saw them in late January, so I'm going to update you on some of the data in terms of where we are. I want to talk a little bit just about the moral imperative of inclusion, so it was great to hear the presentation about outdoor learning spaces and how we continue to push that here. Talk a little bit about our existing continuum and then turn it over to Jared to speak a little bit more about Effective School Solutions. So what's very ironic is actually Jared had this in his presentation and we didn't plan this at all. I'm like, oh, that's in my presentation. So you'll see it again in a moment, but you saw it in January. But we do know, according to the National Institute of Mental Health, that 20 percent of our children between the ages of 13 and 18 live in some sort, with some sort of a mental health condition. And our goal here in the district and in the community with some of our larger work is to continue our work around education and destigmatization around issues of mental health. The, our hospitalization data to date right now, in terms of students who are hospitalized specifically for some sort of mental health concern, is we're at 50 right now. When we were here in January, we were at 30-something, I think. I'm trying to remember what exactly we were. 80 percent of those students are in grades seven through 12. So that number has not necessarily changed. The number that I think really has those of us like Andrew worried is our safety assessments. So we do safety assessments clearly pretty regularly. In January, that number was 94. When we presented to you in January, we were at 175 as of yesterday in terms of safety assessments. And when we do that, we engage with a student to ask them a variety of questions, typically when we're worried about them hurting themselves or possibly hurting others. And so those result in really close communication and collaboration with our families. Sometimes it results in us bringing in outside supports to do a more intensive type of an intake than we can do because of our staff licensure. Sometimes we ask families to bring their child to a local ER for attention, and occasionally we do work with our law enforcement to pull people into custody right away because we're that worried about it, and that does happen periodically. So this number unfortunately is not going down for us. We're at 91 right now at the high school alone. And so as you can think about the staff that we've added up there over the last few years with our counselors, our psychologists and our school social workers, those folks are incredibly busy. And so I want to talk just a little bit around inclusion and I've sort of based my life work around this, and so it's super important to me to really think about how do we design from the beginning? Our lessons, our classrooms, our spaces. It's been very exciting to collaborate with folks around the new building project and how, just from the start, that place is going to just be so much more inclusive than when we were building buildings years ago. But it's really about creating a better world for everyone. It's really around universal design and supporting all learners and all types of folks without having to necessarily worry about whether somebody, for instance, can access the bottom floor in Gates or Douglas when there are three steps down and no elevator in the building. So those are things that we have to take into consideration when we're planning for our students. And next year, we're looking at starting with 94 students placed out of district, which is not unusual. It's not out of the ordinary. It's a little higher than we normally start with. We usually start around 88. And there is good reason to support a number of our students in out-of-district placements, particularly those of you that were involved in my hiring process a few years ago. Remember that my background is running a collaborative Michigan-style for a county in Michigan and supporting students through programs for low incidence populations. So students that we would never have a whole cohort here of students to be able to start our own program and make it really worthwhile and inclusive for them. But once a student is placed in a private school, we don't get the kid back, ever. And that's just a reality because really what incentive does a private school have to say, hey, you know what? I think Joey is totally ready to come back to you now. And I'm going to forego that really hefty tuition that you're paying for Joey. So we just don't tend to be, we're not able to necessarily pull kids back. And so for me, the moral imperative and sort of the reason why we're coming to you tonight with this notion is because of the needs that we're seeing, particularly at the junior high school and the students that we're having to send out because their needs exceed what we're able to support. And really with the goal to be, to try and design some sort of a therapeutic placement and program here so we can keep kids here and we don't have to send them out and then not see them again for the rest of their careers here. So my goal would be that a program like this, as we think about our continuum, and I did put on your places tonight, two things. There's a packet from Jared, which he'll talk about in a moment. And then I also put our continuum, just our own continuum there for you. There's a five-page document. It lives on our website. We update it every year, but I always get a lot of questions around that. So as we think about our existing continuum of supports at the junior high for students with social-emotional needs, we have everything from students who are in full-time general education, they might have behavioral needs that are supported with our counselors and with our teachers and with the team structure that exists that where we can problem solve and collaborate for students every single day because of common planning and structures like that. Other students may need the support of our Academic Support Center, which is a general education program, along with perhaps a 504 or not. As we move down the line, we have a learning center, a number of students who have social-emotional challenges who are supported in our learning centers. And finally, we have class program. Actually, Peter and I had the opportunity to hire two of our class teachers this week, I think. Phenomenal. We're really excited about their experiences that they're going to bring. And that's really a resource, sub-separate type of a program where students spend the majority of their day in that program. Our hope and our thinking is that this, a program like Essential Effective School Solutions would sort of be able to encompass the gamut. And Mr. Dory could tell you lots and lots about our STAR program at the high school, which functions similarly, although a little less clinically. But really, the goal is to support kids around hospitalization, around safety, around social-emotional and behavioral concerns, when they're so acute that they really are beyond the scope of our class program teachers to be able to handle, but we still think we can do some work here. So without any more, I'm going to turn it over to Jared Delancey, who is the director for ESS.
Thank you, Dawn. Straightforward?
Straightforward.
Okay, terrific. Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. I'll just say very quickly, Ms. Brolin, sounds like you had a good run. Congratulations to you. So again, my name is Jared Delancey. I'm the director of district partnerships for ESS, for Effective School Solutions. I understand we have time set aside for questions and answers. I'm sure that'll be a robust session of questions and answers, so I'd like to hit the highlights of ESS for you and just give you a feel for what the program looks like, how it's run, its history and mission, who runs it, so that you have a good feel for those questions. The mission of ESS, as Dawn alluded to, is really to provide a comprehensive and structured and data-packed, fully clinical program embedded in the school day for students with emotional and behavioral challenges, K through 12 students, whether or not those students are classified, so that those students can benefit from everything a district like Acton-Boxborough has to offer and be kept in district, maintained safely and successfully and thrive. That mission began with two programs in New Jersey. We're in three states, New Jersey, Connecticut and Pennsylvania, but we started in New Jersey in two districts, two very different districts. One, a smaller, blue-collar town called Booton, New Jersey, which I don't expect you to have heard of. The other, you may have heard of, Cherry Hill, New Jersey, larger, more affluent community. And we're in both of those districts to this day, and we've expanded to their schools, more of their schools than what we started in. And we're now in 48 districts and 89 schools. And I think there's a number of reasons for that expansion. One of them relates to the slide that Dawn and I both had, great minds, right, Dawn? And that's this one. Again, the key statistic there, I think, the others are about particular mental health challenges, but one in five, students 13 through 18, young people 13 through 18 with mental health challenges. We did our first statewide mental health summit, ESS did, in New Jersey this past April, and the word that was used most often was epidemic. I'm not alarmist by nature, but I do think that's an appropriate word and not hyperbole for the state of mental health in our country and beyond. So why have we expanded the way we have? There's a need and we've been responding to that need. ESS is a very data-driven organization. The founders of ESS knew from the beginning that for a program of this size, carrying with it this size of investment, that we'd need to have numbers, that would need to be data-backed. These are some of the most important ones that I think you'll find compelling. Last year, we worked with 1,506 students. 98 percent of the students that we worked with were maintained safely and successfully in district and not need to be sent out to private therapeutic schools. And I'll just say quickly, ESS was born out of a private therapeutic school in New Jersey called Cornerstone Day School. It still exists. Founders of ESS founded Cornerstone. They're very proud of Cornerstone. There is a place for out-of-district placements and for private therapeutic schools, but what we did find, as Dawn mentioned, was that students get stabilized, but they don't come back. They don't have anything to step down to. And there are some students, the founders of Cornerstone acknowledged, were the first to admit, that with the right supports in place would not have had to have been removed from their home district to begin with. So that 98 percent number there, we're most proud of. So that ninety-eight percent number there, we're most proud of. We also measure for every single student that we're working with. This is the aggregate, but we present the districts that we're working with, our district partners, with an ESS report card, we call it, so that you get these numbers yourselves. We measure always grades, discipline, and attendance, those major three student outcomes for all of our districts, and measure the impact of ESS before and after. Last year, our grades improved for fifteen-hundred-and-six students by twenty-eight percent. Absences were reduced by forty-two percent. A lot of that is driven by a school avoidance protocol. All of the services we deliver have protocols, particular ways we want them delivered. That school avoidance protocol involves our clinicians, who I'll talk about shortly, going to the home when students are absent, which is obviously very effective. And then finally, discipline. Sixty-seven percent reduction in disciplinary incidents. And we're getting these results year after year. The ninety-eight percent number is there again, but specifically students that we've brought back from out-of-district placements last year. A ninety-four percent success rate, meaning they didn't have to be sent out again. And again, we're talking about students at the highest level, a third tier, students with severe needs in terms of their emotional and behavioral challenges. So we're very proud of that number as well. And then we also see a lot of students, and this is related most often to school avoidance and anxiety, who are on extended or long-term home instruction. So we do have a lot of work to bring those students back comfortably, safely, so that it sticks back into the school district, back into the building. We collect not only the objective data, but qualitative data from our parents, of course. They're always asked these seven questions and then given an opportunity to write as they see fit about their experience with the program. We do this at different points in the year. And last year, we had a hundred percent success rate of parents who either agreed or strongly agreed with these seven questions. They relate to confidentiality. Was your confidentiality respected? Do you feel respected in general by the ESS program? Do you think it's working? Is it helping you cope? And I'll talk about the family services that we offer as well. Some of the quotes from our parents. Okay, so how is that happening? How are we getting that data year after year? What does the program look like? Who's the team that would be embedded, running the program if we were to work together? What is the support we offer teachers? Just briefly, I have my license in clinical social work. I had a private practice working with students. But prior to that, I was a school teacher. I taught middle school in the South Bronx. And I saw this need from both ends, the classroom and in the clinical setting. But the classroom piece was so important to me when I first heard about the program and first sat with the founder of ESS, because I knew that it was so daunting for me to stand before that class and know that there were students there who needed me far beyond the academic needs, who had emotional and behavioral challenges, and I had no idea how to support them. And I didn't have a special education degree, but even if you get, I'm sure you're all quite familiar, take that route, a master's in special education, very little training on working with students with emotional and behavioral challenges in the classroom. So teachers need our support. It's a cornerstone of what we do. I'll talk about that briefly. And then, of course, we also knew that we would not be successful if we were some satellite program in the corner of the building, not communicating with school and district leadership. Those lines of communication have to be open throughout the year regularly, built into the program. I'll talk about that as well. Actually, let's stay on that slide so you can see those four pieces. If you're familiar with the clinical landscape and higher levels of care, I often liken ESS to a partial hospitalization program. It's that level of clinical intensity and comprehensiveness. Basically, the idea there is, again, having been born out of a private therapeutic school, we're looking to provide a level of clinical care commensurate with those higher levels of care, and in many cases, more so, but embedded in the school day. We are trying to strike a balance between comprehensive clinical support and disrupting a student's day as little as possible. And that's a real challenge, but we've been doing that for a decade now. And I think we've, our data demonstrates that we're doing it pretty well. So the program is as follows. And again, I'll go through it fairly quickly, and then you'll have a chance to ask questions about it. But we have three structured contacts every day. We see our kids for group every morning. Our kids are coming in dysregulated. We want to get them set up for a successful day, stabilize them in the morning, first thing. Many of our kids struggle with the unstructured time of lunch. They're either the ones kicking up dust, so to speak, or too fragile and nervous about that environment. So we have our kids sit with us at lunchtime, opportunity for our clinicians to check in. And then an academically-focused class at the end of the day called Learning Strategies. At least, that's our name for it. You can call it whatever you like. But one of your district educators would be teaching that class, but one of our clinicians would be sitting in. Again, an opportunity to check in before the students go home for the end of the day. That's every day in the standard model. In addition to that, individual therapy at least once a week, family therapy every other week, and a family support group once a month. I'm very happy to report that our family participation rate is very high, particularly with family therapy. Our families all sign consents to be part of this program, of course, for the obvious reasons, but also for the symbolic reason. We are saying that the district has gone out of their way to bring this program in to support your child, but we still need your support. We still need you to participate in this program. So the message is delivered early and often. But they're getting tons of services, not only the individual family therapy and the family support group, which is an opportunity for all families to come together, have a sense of solidarity once a month around this program. They get some psychoeducation, a lecture. There's always food and everything that we do, which maybe is most important. But the families really appreciate that. They're also getting a newsletter once a month that summarizes some important topic in adolescent mental health and always has bullet points, practical tips for how to utilize those techniques in the home. Families from their point of view are getting these services for free. ESS partners with school districts. So for the families, it's free, all located conveniently in the school. No one's asking them to find therapists to support their child, to navigate the insurance healthcare system or to come out of their own pocket. They tend to be very appreciative of this program. So participation rates are high. Structured program also includes a summer program. But just as important as the structured piece are the urgent interventions. Who are we looking to work with in Acton-Boxboro? It's really that relatively smaller group of students with the highest level of need who are taking up most of the time of the child study team, the school social workers, et cetera. We want to take primary clinical responsibility for those students so that the child study team, the school social workers, the school psychologists, guidance counselors can spread the wealth, so to speak, as they were intended to, to the broader school community. And in that way, we, I'm also happy to say, very often become their best friends in that way. So that's the goal. The urgent interventions come into play when we're responding to students decompensating or melting down, so to speak, in the classroom. We get that call. We respond. We're looking to get that student de-escalated and back into class as quickly as possible. May not be possible. Worst-case scenario, highest level of need. We're independent licensed mental health professionals in the building. We can do an assessment as to whether that student is a risk to herself or himself or others. Saves you a lot of time and the child study team a lot of time. And obviously, it's the safest way to go about that. So urgent intervention is just as important as the structured piece. But who would be running that program in the building? In the standard model, it's a four-person team. Two licensed mental health professionals. These are typically LCSWs, which is the credential that I have, licensed clinical social workers, fully licensed. Most importantly, in addition to the licensure, they're coming from clinical settings, psychiatric settings, not the school world. Again, this is separate from school social work. This is fully clinical. So they're coming from partial hospitalization, from intensive outpatient, from residential treatment centers. They've been dealing with students with a high level of need, day in and day out. We want the district to be reassured that we're bringing qualified, credentialed, experienced folks into your building. They're there all day, every day, becoming part of the fabric of this school. They're working with a cohort of twenty students, each of them carrying ten, max. One of them will take a leadership role, but they're both carrying the caseload. The third person on the team is what we call the regional clinical director. That would be like your own executive clinical director. That person provides the overarching leadership to the program, programmatic supervision. But also, and again, this is key with respect to comparing a district's attempts to do this on their own or other vendors. Our clinicians, despite the amount of experience that they have, we require them to get weekly clinical supervision from the regional clinical director. When I had my two thousand hours or whatever it was in my practice, and I was no longer required to get clinical supervision, I didn't seek it unless I had a very difficult case and I had a mentor I would go to and she would help me out. But I didn't seek it. We require our clinicians to sit with our regional clinical director at least that one time a week, and it's ongoing. So that's a very important part of what that third member does. That person will also be running administrative meetings that I'll talk about briefly. It's what I think of as the medical round model. It speaks to this issue of communication with your team and school leadership and district leadership. I'll get to that in a moment. That's the third member of the team. The fourth member of the team is a quality and risk management person. Again, very unique in terms of in-school mental health. This is a person fully dedicated to reviewing the clinical charts. We keep detailed clinical charts like you'd find in any psychiatric setting. And that quality and risk management person is looking at the chart for any red flags, anything we need to dig deeper on. Everyone on the team is clinical in the way that I described. So that's another set of clinical eyes on the chart to reassure the district. Also, that person is making sure our clinicians are following our protocols. Again, no matter how experienced they are, we know the way that these services are delivered to get the type of data that we've been getting. We want them to follow those protocols, like the school avoidance protocol I mentioned. In your packets, there's a description of the school avoidance protocol, a behavioral student protocol, many others. The quality and risk management person is making sure that our clinicians are following those protocols. And finally, that person is collecting the data to give you the ESS report card at different points in the year. Often, we'll sit with the superintendent when that report card comes in to review that data. So that's the four-person team. Moving on to the professional development piece, also in your packets is a professional development library. We are looking to incorporate professional development throughout the year, not only for the teachers in the school that we're in, working with our students, but all of the teachers in that building, not only all of the teachers in that building, all of the teachers in the district. And I think this is a really key point. Everyone understands the spirit of the model to work with that relatively smaller group of students with the highest level of need. But the question comes up often. We have other students who don't maybe, who are not as needy in terms of their emotional and behavioral challenges. What can you do for them? And I think this is the response to that question. Professional development for the whole district allows that net to be cast wider to provide clinical supports to students who need them on whatever level in terms of the continuum that you showed earlier, Dawn. So that's very important. You can see some of the topics on there. It's executive functioning deficits. One that's not on there is LGBTQ. We're always adding positive behavioral supports. Nurtured heart is a common thread for, if you're familiar with that program, for all our PD. So PD is crucial. And finally, the relationship piece that I mentioned. So that regional clinical director, who provides the overarching leadership for the program, she or he will be running weekly administrative meetings. Again, it's like medical rounds. Our clinical team and yours, your school social workers, et cetera. Some principals are more hands-on than others. Some school psychologists participate. We really want everyone around the table. We're discussing every single student clinically and academically every week. Now, there's communication going on every day, of course, but this is time set aside to review all of those students, like a medical round situation. Very important, not only for being on the same page about what's going on with these students, but for building that relationship between your staff and our clinical team. And the best compliment we get, and we look to get it as quickly as we can, is there is no distinction any longer. It's one team. And our clinicians are able to demonstrate their commitment, their dedication, and their prowess in those meetings as well clinically. Very important. The other meeting that we like to have once a month, we know school principals are very busy people. Andrew's a busy guy. But we would ask for, once a month, please set aside a half an hour to talk about the program from the bird's eye view. We're getting into the minutia every week in the administrative meetings. The regional clinical director wants to sit alone with the principal, certainly the assistant superintendent, director of special services. Anyone on that level can be there. But our clinicians are not in that meeting. We're not discussing every single student. We're asking you, how's it going? Is there anything you think we need to tweak? Okay, so we don't want anything to go unsaid. We don't want anything to fester. That's an opportunity for us to discuss how it's really going. And we're also discussing, very importantly, the clinicians in that meeting. They're not in that meeting. We're asking, what do you think? We do a very thorough job, as I've tried to explain, of vetting our clinicians, but it may be a personality conflict. Maybe they don't fit. It doesn't happen very often, but if it does, it is written into your contract that you are able to replace that clinician if you don't feel it's a good fit. That discussion can happen at any point, but can certainly happen in that principal's meeting once a month. So that's crucial. We're sitting with superintendents, talking about the ESS report card, and we're always sitting with the Dawns of the world to talk about how this program is going. Lots of communication. So that's the basic run-through. This is the summation that I think really distinguishes ESS from other providers and from a school, a school district as chock-full of talented folks as this one. So it's not necessarily a matter of do you have people who can provide a high level of clinical support? It's are they able to, within the parameters of school social work, and do they have the time, the bandwidth, to do this? I like to say, to put this in a nutshell, the relevance of ESS is that schools were not built to provide this level of clinical care. And that's why we're seeing the challenges that we're seeing. Schools just aren't built to do it. ESS is an answer to that dilemma. So it's the team that we're bringing in, following the protocols that are tried and true, data-backed, being supervised by a seasoned regional clinical director, a seasoned clinician, and being scrutinized by a quality management person and risk management team member. And our clinicians know, by the way, that they've got to be on their toes to be in this program. I'll just say very quickly, with all of that pressure, why are we getting such great clinicians? Why would they want this job? The number one reason that they cite in interviews and as they stay with us through the years is an opportunity to see students' growth. They're coming from settings where they may see a student for two, three weeks, maybe a month, and that student goes into other settings, and they don't know what happened to that child, and they've become attached. They want that student to succeed, that young person. So here's an opportunity for them to see growth over the course of a school year and beyond. It's very attractive to them. We also pay them well, as you might imagine. And I don't know if you know this, but school districts get lots of days off. That's also, if you're coming from a psychiatric setting, a residential treatment center. It's a nice perk. So this tends to be a very attractive job for them, and we tend to get really highly qualified folks. So the team, the leadership, the quality and risk management, and that data, for me, as crucial as anything, is the professional development. And all of that together, I think, is why we've expanded the way we have. So with that said, I just want to thank you once more. Really appreciate this time and your commitment to the overall well-being of your students in Acton-Boxboro. And I guess we're going to step into a Q and A at some point. Thank you.
Yeah, the last thing that I'll say is that Andrew and Assistant Principal Ellison Warren, Pam Smith, our special ed director, and Matt Kidder and I went and spent a day at the closest program to us in Madison, Connecticut. We were able to spend a few hours with the middle school principal, with members of, with their regional clinical director, the, one of the social workers in the program, and just sort of understand better what does it like, look like on the ground in a junior high school program. So that was incredibly helpful, I think, for us as well to sort of understand what it might look like. So what questions might you have for us?
So what does it look like on the ground?
You want to answer that?
Sure, sure. I did run through it very quickly. And usually, it'd take about an hour, an hour and a half when I sit with directors of special services, et cetera, to talk about it. If you're familiar at all, it really does look like the type of services a student would receive in a higher level of care, like an intensive outpatient or partial hospitalization. So specifically, again, like, for example, an intensive outpatient program, you might have group therapy three times a week. We see a lot of pretty unique schedules in school districts, so sometimes we have to tailor this program. But in a standard model, our goal is group therapy every morning, which looks and feels like group therapy does in psychiatric settings. Long-term issues, short-term issues. We're looking to get the students stabilized for a successful day. That's every morning. We're always looking to work closely with the school principal about how she or he wants to tailor the program. So this next point of contact, lunch, could be that, in the beginning, all the students are required to sit in that lunch period with our team in our ESS space. Some principals say, you know, you guys have a, we have a level system. Students can earn their way out. Other principals say, let's just make it optional. And that's fine. We want to work with you on that. But we strongly encourage that touch point in the middle of the day. And then that learning strategies class is at the end of the day, academically focused. You know, we're in a lot of high schools, and many AP students are in our ESS program with anxiety through the roof. So it's not necessarily that the students aren't doing well with their academics. It's just an opportunity at the end of the day to check in. And again, some districts, whether it's due to scheduling or they say, you know, the students in the program, their academics are okay. They decide to forego, maybe in that first year, learning strategies. I always highly recommend it, but again, we're looking to work with you with your schedule. So that's every day. Then individual therapy, once a week. Then individual therapy, once a week. Many of our students, as you can imagine, are in crisis often, so it'll be individual therapy more than once a week, but built-in once a week. Family therapy every other week. A point that I didn't make is, our clinicians will stay one evening every week for families who can or will not come during the day. Our clinicians come to school before school starts for families who prefer to meet before sessions class begins. So they're really bending over backwards to make family therapy work. They're doing a lot of phone coaching with families, being on the phone at night. We tend to become, I mean, they really see us as the family therapist. We're a part of the district, but we're the family therapist. And then that family support group is once a month in the evenings. So that's what it looks like. Again, the team that's really going to be where the rubber meets the road are those two clinicians who are in the building all day, every day. If that answers your question. All right, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to do that.
Thank you for a great presentation, and I also read about this at home. It seems really interesting. I think one of the negatives of out-of-district students is the severing of social connections. So I'm curious about what this looks like for kids who are clearly struggling but are facing their peers still. And so if you could describe physically, where are the students compared to peers? Where are they having this lunch, where they are now being monitored essentially by adults that, you know, in a format that's not typical? Yeah, and where's the space for this? Just, that's one of the few questions I have.
So we haven't decided exactly where the space would be here. There are, there's definitely sort of a recipe you found in terms of the location in schools that works?
The recipe is two, we joke, the internal joke is two boxes. We're in 89 buildings. We've had to get pretty creative about space. We need one space big enough to do group therapy with half the cohort, because we run different tracks, so eight or nine students in a room and a clinician. That would be the lead clinic, this is ideal, by the way. We don't always get this. That would be the lead clinician's office. We would do lunch there. We would do the family support group there. And then the second box would be for that second clinician. That would be her or his office, just big enough to do an individual session or an individual family session. That's ideal. In many districts, particularly in the first year, we haven't even had that. So we've had one room, and we try to find an empty classroom to do group. Not ideal, but we've been able to do that. That second box for that second clinician, we've, no exaggeration, we've had our clinicians move into coat closets to store spaces. So we really try to make it work, and we've been pretty successful at it. I will say this also, we're creating a therapeutic space. So we bring in the leather sofas, we bring in the paintings, we bring in the carpets, the paint. We don't do the painting, because then you run into union issues, but we're trying to make this a safe haven for our students. Very often, we have to kick teachers out of the space, because it really is a peaceful space for them.
Students, though, are often really struggling to maintain connection with peers. How do you insulate students who are really sick from the stigma and the potential pitfalls of still having to integrate with all their peers when they are doing so poorly, you know?
As opposed to a removal, right? So again, I do think in some situations, it is appropriate, clinically appropriate, to remove a student from that school environment. What I would argue is, as a clinician, is that it's less appropriate than what we've done, I don't mean Acton Boxborough, I mean in general, historically. I think this is an opportunity, by wrapping services around students, so to speak, to really support students enough that they are able to better cope with the rigors of the school world, both socially and academically and extracurricular and otherwise. And it's been a very successful model in that way. They get very, they become, we call it therapeutic rapport, probably familiar with it in the clinical world, they become very close to these clinicians. We had a visit, Dawn mentioned visiting Madison, Connecticut. I did a visit yesterday. And when, in some visits, the school district is comfortable enough to have students actually speak on behalf of the program, or just share their thoughts about the program with a visiting district. And I was truly moved yesterday. There were two young girls talking about, really just, I feel safe. They both had school avoidance issues and high anxiety. I feel safe being able to come and see, and Ms. Dawn was one of the clinicians, and Ms. Melissa. It's a person there, and it's really, I would say, it's not a mystery why this works. It's just, school districts, bandwidth, with the parameters of school social work, your hands are tied in being able to do something like this.
I have one comment and two quick questions. First comment is, anytime we can keep our students in district, I think is a great, great option and opportunity. The two questions, you know, you mentioned that you guys are currently operating in New Jersey, Connecticut, and Pennsylvania, so you're not operating currently in Massachusetts. Is there anything different about the landscape of the educational sphere in Massachusetts or the clinical sphere in Massachusetts that we need to be worried about? And I'll give you my second one, because it's going to be easy to remember, which is, what is the transition, if this program's in junior high, what does the transition to high school look like?
So the trans, I'm going to, I'm going to start with the last one first. The transition to high school is an interesting question. There are actually, when we look at our continuum of supports for students with social, emotional, and behavioral challenges, we have a broader continuum at the high school and the high school because of the STAR program there, which is a licensed BRYT, B-R-Y-T, it has an acronym, program. It's, our staff are very adept at supporting students coming in and out of hospitalization for a variety of reasons, most of which are mental health reasons. And then there are other supports, both general and special education supports at the high school. So the BRYT program, the STAR program at the high school actually is as close to this as we have, but it's not really, it is clinical, but it doesn't necessarily have clinical, a ton of clinical staff. There's a school social work or a school psychologist assigned to it. And so I actually don't worry all that much about the students transitioning to the high school, honestly. I'm more worried about, you know, as I'm thinking about students potentially for the program, there's a handful coming up from sixth grade that we just don't think we're going to be able to meet their needs, and there's some students that are in the building right now that we know we're not meeting their needs. And so, and as I went back over the last three and four years to look at our out-of-district data, it's clear to me there's a handful of students, and I do wonder, I don't have an answer about the transition, and would they, if we had this here four years ago, would we be, would they be able to go to the high school? I don't know. I can only imagine that we probably would have a far greater likelihood with the structures that are in place. What was the first question? Oh, so you'll be happy to know that our council has already reviewed the contract, and we're already sort of talking back and forth about what. There are some unique pieces of the landscape, not a ton, but some unique pieces of our landscape here that we have to take into consideration. So, yeah, we're looking at all that.
Yeah, I just wanted to say very quickly, it's not premature to say, I'm happy to say we're going to be in Stonem, Massachusetts. Yeah, I'm really excited about that. Important thing to mention.
With respect to the objectives for this evening, my understanding is that your plan is to introduce this program in the coming fall within the scope of the current budget. And with that understanding, I guess my first question is, what feedback are you looking for from the committee tonight?
I can jump in on that. So the cost, I don't actually know if you actually indicated the total cost of the program, but $280,000?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, $285,000, which is a significant cost. It would be our intent to fund a pilot of this program through the use of our Circuit Breaker Reserve account in year one. We think that's an appropriate account to be able to use this for, because it's also there for, to offset out-of-district placements that we have for students. So because, while the intent of this program is not simply to bring students back or prevent students from going out of district, there's a higher intent to why we want to provide this program. We do foresee that we may be able to bring some students back from out-of-district placements and prevent other students from going. So that's why we're targeting the use of the reserve account for that purpose. What I'm seeking from you tonight, we have some additional work from a budgetary standpoint about the process we would need to use to move this forward, to use Circuit Breaker reserves, whether that's a budget amendment or something like that, I want to do more research on. But before we got to a point where I was asking for your vote to do something like that, what I wanted to do first was be able to bring this to you tonight and get a general sense of the temperature of the room, and if this is something you wanted to move forward to the next step, which, at that point, I would then pursue all of the details, you know, making sure our attorneys finalize the details of the contract, making sure that we had, you know, researched the appropriate space with ESS in order to know exactly where the program was going, and come back to you with the actual funding mechanism that would trigger that and ask for a vote to approve it.
So from my perspective, that kind of information, you know, is helpful preamble to this kind of presentation in terms of understanding where we're going, because, you know, I could see where I was going, but it's much better if you tell me where, where we're going, and that's what I would request in the future. And then, you know, I would comment that from my extremely limited understanding of this program and my slightly greater understanding of the STAR program, this is more clinically intense than the STAR program, and my expectation would be that, you know, if this was successful at the junior high school level, there would be things that would spill over, you know, into programs, you know, at the high school. And so that's where continuity would be found.
Or the other way, to the elementary.
Or to the elementary. And I think that, you know, I have a lot of sympathy for the challenges that everybody in the school system, you know, faces dealing with, you know, students with significant emotional needs. I mean, it's a, it's a hard problem, and everybody sees it. And some people, like yourself, you know, are specially trained for it, and other people, like parents, you know, and many of people who work in this system, have limited background, you know, and tools that they can bring to bear on problems. So having, you know, professional expertise to help support, you know, the parents and everybody involved in the child's education, I think is a great thing.
That was one of the striking features for me. You know, Deb and I have presented over the last few years as we've talked about expanding our coaching model and the importance of coaching to support. And it's interesting, because of the structure of your program, they actually get coaching once a week at least from that regional director. But one of the things that really struck me, and I think it struck Andrew as well, was when we were talking to the social worker, and she was talking about, you know, the goal is always to get kids back to class. And she talked about pushing into classrooms and observing kids or supporting teachers, and so they, they really function in a coaching role as well. There is no better way to work on a set of skills than to do it contextually around some of our toughest kids. So that was really exciting for me to hear.
From what I heard, you know, it's more like, I would say, general introduction to this program, am I right? It's more general, right, introduction to this program, right?
Yes, I mean, the meat, you've gotten a good taste of the core of it, but there's a lot to it, yeah.
Right. So it, because, you know, what I'm looking for is that I, you know, it's a generic, but I want to know how this program fits into our school district. I am looking for, you know, the plan, or, you know, you tell me how this one, you know, is, is good for our school district, specifically. I'm not looking for the generic, generic solution. I'm looking for the specific solution to our school district.
So I think, Michael, you came in probably after the slide where I explained that? I think you came in when Jared was talking, maybe? So you maybe missed where I sort of talked about the context of ESS within our context here? I'm not sure.
Well, I, I'm not sure, did you talk to the parts of this school district about this? Communicated with them? And then to, you know, to, you know, because if you don't know, if you didn't talk to the parts, if you didn't talk to the students, right? That's a general, that's a generic, that's not specific. You see what I mean? I want to know the specific solution.
I think that it's a consideration of what stage they're at. Peter's asking us, do we endorse this enough for them to look at how it would fit specifically in our district? And so then that would get down to very specifics. What space are they actually going to sit in? Which closet do they get, right? And then how will the kids flow from general ed classrooms into here? And that will all happen unless we say, no, we don't really think this is the right thing for us right now. So it's kind of a step process, and then it'll come back to us to look at.
Well, it's, what you said is just more like, you know, for, you know, if we have a space here to host this, right? What I'm looking for is, is that, you know, I want to know how many students really need this service, number one.
I also, I'm sorry, I just want to say, Dawn did, at the beginning, gave us a really good breakdown and explained exactly how, what's happening in our district before Jared got up and spoke.
So my understanding, Michael, is that the genesis of this program arises from the school environment, which is very, it's hyperstructured and intensive with high performance expectations, especially from the, when you get to the junior high, and that if you want to walk, go back and watch Dawn's part of the presentation, she, she explains how, how this program came to be something that we are considering here in the district now. So I, just briefly.
Component of the program? I mean, this, this is what pilots are for, is to make sure there's a fit before you scale up.
So Mary, to do one?
Yeah, I echo what Paul says. I think, you know, if it's a pilot, then it's, you know, yeah. So and I have one more question.
I would encourage you to just go and back and watch, because I think it'll be, it'll help you kind of anchor. Can I just move on to Mary then, Tessa? And then if anyone has a second question?
I just have a quick question, and then we can, so can you, because this question is for school admin, so can you do some research or investigation on how other school districts, you know, who are using this ESS program, how they fund this one? They are funded through the budget, or is kind of a partial paid by budget and then partial paid by the students and the family?
So we would, if we bring this program in, the district would be required to pay that under Massachusetts law, because it's our, it's our program that we're running for students.
There also is a potential for an offset with Medicaid reimbursement around the clinical nature of the services as well. Not to mention any possible cost savings. You know, Jared and I agree on this, not approaching this from a cost savings measure, because we're talking about kids, and we're talking about families and keeping them in our community. And so to me, it's a much higher purpose of inclusion and inclusionary practices than necessary numbers. But there is great potential for us to be able to save money by keeping kids here.
So as we, over the years, as we've seen kids have more and more mental health issues that are coming into the schools, I think the challenge is that schools are a great place to reach kids, but school personnel are not trained in this. They don't have the expertise. So I'm really intrigued by this pilot. I like the expertise that's coming in, the, you know, psychiatric expertise. I like the supervision that's happening, because I think that's also something schools just aren't as strong at. I am curious about the staffing. So this would be a new program. Would you hire new staff for this? And what's their training before they get here? And what's your turnover rate like?
Those are great questions. Thank you. And yes, once we decide we're going to go forward, once we partner with a district, we begin our recruitment from that area, because we're looking for clinicians familiar with that milieu. Every once in a while, we find clinicians who actually went through that school system. We couldn't promise that, but that, that would be the ideal, to give you a sense of what we're looking for. Again, we're always looking for clinicians who are coming from psychiatric settings. And a point that I didn't mention, so thank you for giving me the opportunity to do so, we don't interview clinicians who have not been out of graduate school for at least three years, a minimum of three years before we'll even sit with them. So we're looking for highly experienced, qualified, and always licensed clinicians. The biggest challenge that we have with turnover is maternity leave. This is a very female-dominated environment, and that, that does come up. So when clinicians are out for illness, we have floaters who replace them. That's also written into the contract. But then with turnover, we, obviously, that wouldn't be an overnight thing, so we'd have opportunity to then recruit someone else. The third scenario is, you don't like the fit, in which case, it's also written into the contract. We will then begin a recruitment process for another clinician to replace that clinician. Oh, also, besides their background, again, I'm making the distinction between clinicians coming from the psychiatric world, so to speak, and the school world. We're looking for the former and not the latter, but we need them to be, we need to get them up to speed. So that first summer before they start in the district, and every summer thereafter, they're going to what we call ESS school. At ESS school, they're learning the protocols, and if they're seasoned ESS clinicians, they're refreshing or learning new protocols. But we're training the new clinicians on, what does the school environment look like? What is a director of special services or an assistant superintendent in charge of special education? Who would your point person be? Who would your point person be? Five oh fours, IEPs, what are those? To be clear, we don't do those, that's the school social work world, but we consult on that, um, so we wanna get them ready for that, and we do that over the summer as well.
I have a lot of questions, but I will choose wisely. So, in terms of how this fits into our own thing, we, we have all of these programs that have lots and lots of acronyms, and I sort of have an understanding of what the class program is, but we also just approved spending more money to hire more people for that program. So I'm curious, A, how this is different, because it's being instituted at the junior high also, B, I have some of the concerns, like Adam sort of said about the transition to high school, because the STAR program or whatever isn't actually referenced on this sheet, correct? And that's more of a return from hos- hospitalization program, right?
And then program.
Okay, right, so they've already gone away for, um, this, so my concerns around all of that is I feel like, I know you referenced that, um, many of the profiles coming from sixth grade are things that you have you concerned. My own experience in listening to the world of junior high is that these things kind of crop up in eighth grade a lot of times, some of this crisis stuff. So we're talking about putting this in the junior high, but without an actual transition to the high school, and so I'm just trying to understand how, like, how transitional is this program? How long would students stay in this? Our other resource programs are more like, that's where kids go, where they're, you know, it's not transitional, like, they're in that program and they're in that program. So...
Sure. Um, our average stay in the ESS program is about a year. With that said, there are students, if it's a middle school program, who are with us the whole time. What's really special about that, um, is that those administrative meetings, all the communication that goes on and the closeness with the families, everyone has agreed, the family, the school, ESS, uh, that that child needed that support in order to graduate from that level. But our goal is always least restrictive environment, so we're always looking to step students down out of ESS, um, and open up that slot into the supports that you currently have. Those administrative meetings are largely where that's discussed. Who's stabilized? Who's ready to step down? Who's in the queue, so to speak? Uh, one thing that I will say is, when word spreads that you've got ESS in the building, you're gonna get referrals from every corner of the building, understandably. Teachers are gonna say, he needs ESS, she needs ESS. Um, so we have, uh, an appointed gatekeeper or gatekeepers, um, from the district, who we make thoroughly familiar with the ESS profile, um, and that person will be, so to speak, the first line of defense, and will say, yep, this student sounds like she or he could be an ESSer, we'll discuss them in this Wednesday's administrative meeting, or, no, not yet, let's see, and, and that would be the game plan there. Um, we do have students sometimes who are in crisis, maybe there was a divorce or grief over a loss, they come in for a few months and get stabilized and step back down, that happens too.
Can I, can I just jump in on one thing, 'cause I think I may clarify? Donna, I'm wondering if you can just talk to, when I look at this graphic, um, the continuum in blue that I see is our continuum of services for students who would qualify for special education services? It, no, can you clarify that?
Yeah, so the farthest, the leftmost Chevron is really...
Correct, general education.
Oh, you're talking about the right-hand side?
And as we move toward the right.
Right.
Students...
Students in a learning center or students in the class program, for example, are students with IEPs, specifically.
Correct, and the ESS program spans all continuance services?
Correct.
So students can come back and forth between all of those different levels? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
I guess really, especially with what he answered, my question is, so a student qualifies mid-eighth grade, so then what happens? Because that's not, you know, like, that, that's, there's not gonna be a year in the junior high to, you know, resolve or whatever. I'm just, I'm just curious about how it transitions to then, do they go to the STAR program in the high school? That would be for the kids that were, you know, I mean, 'cause that's significantly...
To be totally honest, we don't know yet, because we've not done it. However, um, I know the amount of time that Andrew and his team put in, because they get kids coming up and kids they're sending on, and so the amount of time we put into transition in this district into really, really thoughtful, comprehensive transition meetings around kids' needs, and, and it may be that a number of those students, we say, you know what, none of our programs at the high school are going to be supportive enough, and then that's a decision point for us around, do we have enough students to make a cohort where we would be expanding a program into the high school, or is this a situation where the student really needs a therapeutic placement out of, out of district?
Mm-hmm.
Could you clarify what you mean by stabilization? Because I, my understanding of that, it's like short, a short-term goal, but then you said the average stay is a year, and I'm wondering, what is, is your, how much of your, um, how much is driven by, like, stabilizing for the short term, and how much is driven by longer-term remediation, by which I mean, the acquisition of pretty solid emotional self-regulation skills?
That's a great question. Stabilization is, is, is primary, because very often, the students who are coming into the program are coming in with a high level of need or downright in crisis, um, so we're looking to stabilize. Um, part of me is smiling about your question, because we do have a challenge sometimes with families who really, uh, do respond to this program and are grateful for it, and then when the student is ready to step down, they say, we don't want her to step down or him to step down, and it's never an overnight thing, just to make this point. If a child, as a team collectively, we determine that child is ready to step out of, step down from ESS, um, we're looking to transition. It's not, it, it would be, maybe they're with us just for group, or maybe they see us just for individual, or we continue with family. Um, so it's a smooth transition that way, because the, there, if they are, if they are, um, it's determined with the, among the group and those administrative meetings, that a child is ready, um, to step down into the, the other programs you have in place, and it's gonna happen. Um, so we're, we're familiar with working with families who are trying to hold on, but I'm, I'm, I wanna make sure I'm answering your question, and I think it's, if I'm understanding correctly, the difference between the goal of stabilization and the goal of maybe thriving? Or, right, so, um, we, we want all of our students to thrive, I think what we're, we are clear that the spirit of the ESS model is really for students who are having the, the highest level of need. Um, so, I, I like to think, and I like to think that our data suggests that what we're doing to stabilize them, and then to support them and make them feel empowered enough that they don't need ESS, um, does lead to thriving and improvement in their grades and their attendance and their discipline, or wherever they were struggling. Um, but I'm not, I'm not sure I'm answering your question well enough.
Well, I, what I'm hearing from you is that it's both. You want stabilization, and you, you don't want your program to be a revolving door, like, they stabilize, they go, they come back, they still...
That's right.
...that kind of thing, you, you're going for the longer-term social, emotional...
We want it to stick, skill building, um, ego strength, et cetera. We want it to stick, for sure. Always least restrictive environment is our goal.
Okay, um, I'm gonna, I just, I don't wanna kinda cut off discussion for this particular, I know we're probably gonna go late, but, um, if you, um, just, if you have one more question, just raise your hand, and I'll, I'll follow you. So let, Michael, I'm gonna have you go first, and then I'll come back around here.
Uh, I just wanted to follow, uh, what Diane asked, this, the, you know, the, I guess it's like, you know, your program is really looking for a long-term therapy for a student, right? If the student needs a long-term therapy, then this ESS program fits in.
Yeah, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but...
Because that's what, that's what you just, when you answered the Diane's question about, you know, stabilization.
I'm saying no, because sometimes there's a crisis, um, that students have, at the point I was trying to make earlier, um, and maybe I didn't make it well.
But you mentioned the long-term, 'cause even Diane conclude that it's, you know, it's kind of a for long-term, you're not looking for a short-term therapy.
No, I would, the, I think the distinction I'd try to make is that what we're not looking for, anything in particular, except to support the child with what she or he needs, very often that ends up being long-term. But it could be short-term, it could be a crisis, the student comes in and gets stabilized and gets that support and really is okay to step down, and that could be a few months, but often their needs do go long-term.
So it would be fair to say you offer customized...
Absolutely, each child is an individual.
But you, you're saying, you're using the often, so I just noticed that, it's, it's kind of often, you know, in most cases, the students really, you know, need...
It is often long-term, it is typically one year.
Right, who really needs a long-term therapy, really fits into this program.
Correct.
I, I, I understand, and, uh, one more question is about, you know, uh, about suicide, right? So, 'cause you're, uh, you're gonna try to kill the, uh, what's called the, uh, uh, because, because suicide is more related to the, you know, not stabilized, right? It's how you, I mean, your program is going to help prevent that, or that's, you know...
I wanna make sure, this is an important question, I wanna make sure I understand it. Are you asking us if we, if we promise to prevent suicides?
No, no, it's not promise, it's just, you know, your...
We deal with suicidal ideation, uh, often, um, absolutely, it comes up, substance abuse comes up all the time, um, yes, we see, if, if you're asking if we see a, a, a great deal of students who, um, are suicidal, suicidal ideation, absolutely, students who have made attempts, absolutely.
So are you going to communicate with the school admin about, you know, the sign of the, you know, the suicide, or no? I mean, 'cause you will have the communication with the superintendent and also the, the school admin.
I'll just, 'cause this could be a long discussion, I'll just say very quickly, that, um, there is always what we call in the, in clinical parlance, contracting, early on. Students and families know that the, the highest regard for confidentiality, as you saw by the parent survey, um, in that respect will be paid to the families, but they also know from day one, when there is a safety risk, that confidentiality, so to speak, is out the window. Then we're gonna be communicating with the school, the, the first, first and foremost, we're upholding the highest level of commitment to safety, that child's safety.
Okay.
Mike? Um, so in thinking about, and my familiarity with, uh, kids who have been in crisis, there's often a, a need for psychiatry and medication, how do you guys, how does the program collaborate with regulating kids with, with meds and, and having conversations with, uh, people who have, are not in the district at all and not tied to the program? Is there...
Right, another very important question. One of our first pieces of homework, um, when we're in a district, and that's why it's also helpful to recruit, recruit clinicians who are familiar with the clinical landscape here, um, is to find out who are the service providers, the hospitals, psychiatrists in the area, um, so that we have those relationships, and that very often, what we're shooting for is those relationships are reciprocal, um, so that if we are in touch with a hospitalization program and we're saying, you know, we may well be referring you students, we expect to get some preference there, uh, we expect to be bumped up, et, et cetera. Very often, the clinicians that we're bringing in have relationships already from their past lives in the clinical world that they were, um, working in prior, um, so, whereas we, we ourselves do not administer medication, um, we are doing the clinical work of discussing that, that's schools, tricky for schools to do, um, and making sure we have those linkages so that we can refer, and then, maybe most importantly, follow the student, 'cause very often, when a student is sent out to get those services, she or he will arrive at your doorstep again, without a game plan, a discharge plan, um, and so our clinicians are following with those providers the whole time to communicate, maintain that communication. Lots of our students even have therapists on the outside, um, who they wanna keep, and that's fine, we encourage that, but we will maintain communication with that service provider.
Jenny?
I just wanna say, from the perspective of just a 30,000-feet view, I love this because this is a huge gap that school districts are dealing with. It's a gap in, um, expertise, it's a gap in training, this is just another example of how our schools are expected to do things that we are not equipped to do, we don't have the skill, the skill set to do, and I know from, um, friends I have that are teachers, how distressing it is to understand that you're responsible for something that you're not trained, um, to handle. And, um, you know, all, our, our teachers care about our kids, and, um, you know, everybody's doing the best they can, but this is like, like, a recognition that this is a huge gap, and I think it's a really exciting model, and I think, you know, I think that, um, I'm all there of this pilot, I'm totally all in. I know there's a lot to talk about, but I, I think it's a really great thing.
I think it's actually a larger gap in the community and in access to mental health, absolutely.
Yes, yeah.
Paul?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, that I am willing to give this a try, because I think it fills a, a niche in a way that we've never really explored before, um, so I'd like to explore that, um, and the money doesn't, um, uh, concern me too much, because I know we've got, we've got plenty in, if I remember correctly, uh, we've got plenty in that, uh, reserve, uh, special education reserve. I do, however, don't view this as a one-year investment, this to me seems like a multi-year investment, and this is kind of the first stage in what I am considering a multi-state, multi-year investment, um, be, before we, you know, decide that it's a permanent fixture of the district.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. I, I, so I completely agree with you, I think that's why it was so important for me, where this is outside the traditional budget cycle, that we'd be very, very clear in coming to you, you know, first tonight, to be able to give you an overview of the program and let you ask questions and process that, um, before we really proceeded to do some of the more detailed planning work, um, and then, prior to coming back to you to, for approval, because traditionally, we would put something like this in a budget process, but it came to us after the budget process, um, but also as we started to explore our students' needs, they were, we were just finding students that just exceed our own internal capacity, and it's not due to any deficits of staff, um, it, it truly is just the needs of our students.
So I, I just wanna end with a quote that I actually wrote down in my notes from Budget Saturday, um, and this is something that Andrew Shen said during the, the Social Emotional Learning Panel. He said, "In order for our students to learn effectively, we've had to take a more global approach to the underlying factors that impact a student's readiness to learn," and I think that this beautifully, um, fills a niche and, and does that, so I, I strongly support the program. Thank you.
So barring any objections, we'll proceed to the next level of planning? So barring any objections, we'll proceed to the next level of planning, um, and be coming back to you for final approval of this, just so you're aware of the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we are now at item 4.3 on the agenda, um, this is the school improvement plan for the high school.
Larry has promised to keep this under an hour, just for everyone's...
I feel like I'm gonna be closing for Rolling Stones concert. Um, where's my, where's my control? My switch? Do we use one, or does somebody switch?
Yeah, I'm gonna be about three minutes. Mary, on behalf of the high school, thank you so much for everything you've done, I really appreciate it.
I'll tell you one quick, my daughter came home yesterday, or the day before, and in gym class, they had gotten on their bicycles, and she came home and said, "I wanna get on my bike," and we pulled out her bike and off she went, and I'm like, yes!
That's great, yeah, yeah. David James has brought some really nice, nice, um, alternative type of activities in there, uh, and the biking and the, um, the ping pong has become real, real huge. So, um, I'm gonna talk about our school improvement goals, I'm gonna give you a brief update, I'm not gonna hit on everyone, and if I speak quickly, it's intentional. Um, the, um, I guess the one thing I'd say right off the bat, that if I had our school improvement goals to write over again, Peter might not agree with this, but I would've just written, "Schedule change." Much of the work that we've done this year has been with the focus of wellness and equity and, and assessment and curriculum, but it's really... but it's really been centered around our scheduling work. And we honestly, at the beginning of the year, didn't know we would be as deeply involved as we are this year in moving ahead in the way that we are. We're thrilled that that's happening, but you'll find as I start to talk about our goals, each time I'll come back to our schedule. So our first goal was school and student wellness. And I'm just quickly going to say that when we look at this, we talk about our ability to continue to support student wellness by evaluating the high school's schedule. There we go. Continuing our student learning series and building wellness strategies and helping students identify strategies to promote resiliency and manage short-term stress in the classroom. So some of the, quickly, some of the outcomes. We created a trial schedule that we're going to implement next year. We've held series of, many series of open meetings with community members and parents and students to talk about the schedule. That's been very helpful. We continue to hold our wellness lunches. Our focus on our advisory lessons has been around resiliency and wellness. We again used wellness-themed academic planners, admin blog focused on wellness. Our counselors continue to lead groups that focus on wellness. We continue to do our signs of suicide SOS screening each year, and we again did our challenge success survey. Classroom instruction and assessment. We write, "Individual departments will continue to work together to develop expectations for workload and assessment, including that it be reasonable amount, that assessments are thoroughly, thoughtfully relevant and authentic, that assessments directly reflect the objectives of a course unit or lesson, and that consideration is given to the scheduling of assessments." We did that work this year. I get into every classroom every year and try to observe as much as I can. And I meet with our leadership team every week. This work went on, but this work was very quickly... This is the focus. I'm not going to go through each one, but this is the focus of our departments in terms of the things that they were looking at, and that would be in your packet. But again, our focus was on working with our schedule. And I'm going to talk about some of the committee work we did with our schedule in a moment. I do want to talk about the bottom line. You can see, next year, we're piloting a variety of lower-stakes formative assessments embedded throughout the year, rather than a formal mid-year week or finals week. What that means is for next year, we're going to trial, okay? Eliminating our mid-year week, eliminating our final exam week. Between our mid-year week and our final exam week and the review that's involved in that, our classes are shut down for about 16 days. And it's not going to say it isn't a valuable experience for students, but it's 16 days of other things that could be going on, whether that's instruction, whether that's, you know, wellness opportunities for students. It's 16 days that we take away from instruction. We believe and research supports that looking at more formative instruction during the year, looking at ways of doing lower-stake summative assessments makes sense. Right now, between the mid-year and the final exam, 20% of the students' final grade is accounted for. And we don't think that has to be that way. We think that, you know, the length of time in which assessments need to be spread out, doesn't need to be, you know, 16 weeks for midterm, that we can assess after three weeks, four weeks, and we think teachers get better feedback when you do that. I've had some questions about, well, they're going to have to go off to college and take, you know, mid-years and final exams, which is true, but you'll also find that more colleges are moving to projects and different ways of students showing what they've learned. But I'll also say the difference between a college mid-year or a final, and currently our high school model is really half a year. Our students take a final exam or a mid-year exam 16 weeks, okay, into the year. In college, they take their mid-year eight weeks and then they take their final in 16 because they're semester courses. Our expectations that our students retain a lot more information over a longer period of time than they actually do in college. So we have a lot of work to do in this area, but I think it's just going to benefit students. And when we get through the end, we're going to evaluate it. Okay. Our last goal this year, and this will continue to be a goal of the district, is the equity, diversity, and inclusion. And we've had a number of initiatives focused in on this particular goal. But the one I really want to talk about today is, thanks to funding from the district, next year, we'll be working with the ADL, the Anti-Defamation League, and we'll be creating a World of Difference peer leader training program at the high school. This is a big program. This is going to require us to send two teachers who will go out and be trained over the summer to serve as advisors. It will require us to train between 30 and 40 upperclassmen to go into classrooms and be able to work with students around recognizing bias and building, understanding of the values and benefits of diversity, improving our intergroup relations, and confronting particularly from a bystander but from all angles racism, antisemitism, in any form of bigotry that exists in the building. This is a big deal for us. It's a big program. It's going to require a lot of our time and it's going to be a big part of our advisory program. In order to participate in this program, we were also required this year to be a part of the BU study, and this will be a two-year study. They're actually looking at the World of Difference program. So they'll be working with our high school. They have a number of surveys and a number of instruments they want to use to measure the success of the program at the high school this year. So that's going to, I think that's good, but it's also going to add a lot more work to what we need to do. So, you know, we're thrilled to have this program. I got behind. I do that. I get behind on my slides. I start talking. So this is our schedule. And this is it. We, I think you've had a chance to look at different drafts during the year, but I just wanted to say a couple of things about the schedule we'll be putting forward next year. And, you know, the first thing I would like to say is we've actually run a schedule with requests, actual requests with teachers, everything that you need, and we've had very good results. We feel strongly that this schedule's going to work in terms of, I've talked about this before. I always look at the, when you look at scheduling, you look at the percentage of students who are able to get 100% of their requests. On a typical year, if we can get 80 to 83% to start, that's great. This particular schedule is starting at 90%. And there's several reasons for that, but that simply means that more students are going to get those electives and those other courses that they're trying to get and not have to take alternatives. So that's a great place to start. The schedule itself continues to offer seven scheduling periods for students. That's no different than what we have right now. However, the difference is we have six periods in a day and we drop a period, okay? So we're rotating one period in. That allows us to continue to have the seven-period schedule. We have our lunches at 44 minutes. Our current lunches are now 45 minutes. So our students are feeling good about that, and I agree they should. The, let me just see if I brought that. Just a couple more facts and then I'll finish up regarding the schedule. Our current schedule has each class 45 instructional minutes. Next year's class will have 45 instructional minutes. Our yearly instructional hours under our current schedule is 135 hours. Our yearly instructional hours per class next year will be 141 hours, so there'll be an increase there. Our average teacher prep time continues to be the same. Our lunchtime changes from 45 to 44 minutes. And to me, the greatest benefit isn't in any of the facts or anything like that, but it's going to be the opportunity for students to take classes at different times in the day. So in the past, if you, I don't want to pick on any one particular subject, but I'll take math. So if you had math, first period, you had math first period every single day. And you had your next class, second period, every single day. Nothing ever changed. I'm very curious to see how a first-period math student will look fourth period and seventh period and eighth period. And I think that's more equitable. I think teachers and students, twice a cycle, having first period off or having the last period of the day off, okay, through a cycle is more equitable than it's been as well. So those are things I look forward to measuring next year and seeing how that impacts student wellness. We will continue to have our advisory. That's not on the schedule right now, but that will continue to be a part of what we do. Any questions?
So I'm really excited to hear about the assessments and the way you're changing the assessment schedule. The idea of more frequent formative assessments without low stakes is incredibly important and all the research shows that that promotes the best learning and retention. And I'm really excited about the new schedule. I guess I would push and ask that, make, I would ask, in my opinion, that as you transition over to longer blocks, that you really use that time, hopefully, to increase active learning and really kind of try to decrease a lot of the passive learning. So hopefully...
That's a big part of what our professional learning is going to be about as we move into, next year, it's really everything that we're going to be covering around our professional learning next year. And the work that's already started this year and is going to continue to go on over the summer. This is a big ask for our teachers. For some teachers, less so. It just feels comfortable and they're very excited about having a longer period to work on skills and to, you know, to break the class up and to do different things. If you are in the math department where lessons are typically much more laid out, in fact, there are 140 lessons in a school year, if you didn't know that. They're, and now they're not going to have 140 lessons, they're going to have a different number of lessons. So they need to go back and they need to look at the curriculum and they need to look at the sequencing and they need to look at how they're going to assess students and what they're going to do with the extra time that they have. And that's a lot of work for a lot of our teachers. And as I said, it's going to be a focus of our professional learning, but also we've been supported very well by Central Office for some additional research and development work.
So I just want to say thank you, and I really do appreciate the willingness of teachers, administrators, to take this on, because I know it is a big deal. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm proud of our staff.
To state the obvious, they're always fans of the status quo. I've heard from some students who were fans of the status quo. And, you know, I hope that as you work through this, you know, everybody will be cognizant of the fact that it has changed and, you know, it's changed for students, it's changed for teachers, and, you know, will be receptive to the feedback, positive or negative, you know, that is the outcome of this program.
Yeah. This has not been easy. I'll tell you. It has not been easy. You know, our teachers and our students, we've been a very successful school. And change can be threatening for lots of different reasons. And it's true of students and it's true of staff. So it was a difficult year. It required a lot of communication with parents, with students. I did meetings every week for several months. And there were small groups, but some nights I'd get 10, 12 people, other nights there'd be four or five people. We presented at the eighth-grade curriculum night. We met with students for as long as students were willing to meet and talk with us. The thing I love about students is that after you go up there, they just kind of like settle back down and there's other things. And I feel good about that, but it was tough. And it was a divisive piece to it. And we finally just had to say, "This is what we're going to do and we expect everyone to do their best and, you know, we'll see where we're going to go with this." I have a good feeling about it, but, you know, we need to assess as we get through next year.
And I just want to make one short comment about summative assessment. So as a theory thing, you know, I've always told my children that I would ideally like to see them bring everything that they ever learned to every problem that's presented to them. So while on the one hand, looking at things at shorter intervals, you know, has merits and is part of a learning paradigm, at the end of the day, you'd really like that aggregated knowledge to come to the table as people confront whatever they are working on in their lives.
Yeah. And I think you'll continue to see summative assessments, absolutely. And I just think they don't have to be high stakes. They don't have to be 20% of the student's final grade. I know our math department will continue to give, you know, longer chunks of summatives, but they may be at different times in the year. They don't have to be in the middle of the year and they don't have to be in the end of the year. You can do a summative, you know, eight weeks into the year and then another summative, another eight weeks into the year, and then give two smaller formative assessments towards the other side of that. There's lots of different ways to approach that, but we don't have to shut down the building for, you know, that many days. And it's, for many years, we only gave mid-years in science and math. We didn't give mid-years in the other areas. And then, you know, we rethought that for whatever reason. You know, I think this is definitely something worth trying. This is public, so I'm going to say this, if I may, that it was my leadership team, not the administration, that, and I'm very proud of them, that put forth this proposal to look at how we do assessment. And I thought it was great that it was coming from the departments, it was coming from the teachers, and it was brought forward by them. It was not something that the, you know, the administration at that time had thought we'd be able to do. And I was thrilled when my department leaders put this forth.
I just want to thank you and your teachers. I think that this is a ton of work and that you're willing to do it, but I think there's just so much opportunity in front. We have to always be growing and going with the research that we know and learning and that. So thank you so much.
Yeah.
I just have a couple of questions. The first one is that I just heard of, this schedule change is totally driven by the equity. Am I right?
Totally driven by what? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
The equity. That you talk about, you know, the teachers, it's the equity for teachers. It's also the equity for the, you know, the students. Am I right? I mean, it's the reason for this new schedule is because of, we want to pursue the equity.
The reason for the new schedule is based exclusively on our students and what we believe is best for our students.
Yeah, I do understand. I'm, because, you know, I, you know, when you were presenting, so you talk about equity a lot, you know, you know, how much equity we can get from this new schedule change. So that made me think that, you know, the driver, the major driver of this schedule change was equity. Am I right?
I'm having trouble with the, excuse me, thank you. For me, equity and wellness are the major pieces to this. Absolutely. Thank you, I'm sorry. That was my fault.
Yeah, from that.
There's equity tied into this in many respects. Is equity tied into how are we going to do our science classes in our science labs? Is equity tied into the rotation that the students will have? There's equity tied into the rotation that the teachers will have in their schedule as well. I also believe there's more equity tied into, I think, this schedule for Acton-Barksboro over the years... over the years, as you know, we have lost more and more hands-on vocational-type opportunities for our students. And we've sent many of these students off to Minuteman Voc Tech, which is wonderful. But as we've gone away from our business programs, as we've gone away from our richer industrial technology programs and offered more academic courses, we don't have enough for a lot of our students. And when you have an eight-period day and you have a junior, a senior, it is sometimes difficult for those students to find more than four classes to take. And, you know, in an eight-period day, that's too much free time, it's not good for those students. I think they will do better in longer-period classes, and I do think a six-period day will serve those students as well. So I think we are providing for a population of students that we need to do a better job providing for.
So my second question is that, you know, during the presentation, you mentioned that, you know, for example, the mathematics class, right, they could be always the first period every single day, right? So, and then with this new change, right, so once they come back from the summer, right, the first day or the first week, they will see completely different schedule, or they will see like a transition, which is the first week probably, you know, I'm getting, you know, four days or three days on math to the first period, but the second week I just got two, right, gradually to, yeah.
We're not quite doing that, but that's a great, great question. What we are going to do is, we have an orientation day where just our ninth-grade students come, and then the following day, all students will be there. For those first two days, we're going to run a full seven-period. All classes will meet. We do have a seven-period schedule. And that's just to get everyone, you know, into the classroom, everyone acquainted with their teachers, and everyone prepared to go. And then we'll go into the rotating schedule from there.
Okay, thank you so much, Larry.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Just as Larry's wrapping up and Dave's getting ready to start, you know, I think one thing I just want to say on Larry's behalf, you know, for all of the work that's taken place over the last three years around the schedule change.
I did not open the questions to the public, so yes, you may. So, yes, I'm sorry, yes. I'm tired, so, okay. So I'm going to let Peter finish, Eileen, and then you can come to the podium now.
So what I wanted to say, you know, we always think that changing schools is about the strategy that we put in place, and I think what I saw Larry do this year, it really had nothing to do with strategy and really bringing this change, which I think has probably been talked about for the better part of probably four years. This was all about personal relationships and trust, because he took the time to make sure he talked with people, he talked with his teachers, teachers had enough trust in Larry to go to him if they had a concern or a question. He made himself available to students, families, community members, staff, and it was really an exercise in leadership to be able to bring a large organization to this type of change. So congratulations, Larry, you did a great job on that.
I'm sorry it's really late, I know, but I think it's a good chance to ask the question. Eileen, Eileen Zhang, 46, Canterbury, here, so I have to say that. So, I'm glad I don't need to stay that long. I have a question for you, Larry. Basically, it's about the, what's that, assessment? So you're saying middle year and final, they're going to be no middle year, final anymore? So...
No, your final week.
Week, but do you have the test?
No, assessments will vary. Assessments will no longer be, you know, the mid-year won't be 10%, and the mid-year's not going to measure 16 weeks of learning. So it will be different.
So I heard from kids, they say that two weeks will not going to be stop learning, so the class will continue, but there's the other test. I heard that, no? No test? So there is just no stop, just to continue learning all the way from the first day to the end?
Yes.
So that, okay, I got that. So how do you, is there some strategy balance, you know, the 10% or 20% of the whole work? I mean, like, the grade to anywhere?
Each term, each marking term will be worth 25%, and there'll be, you know, formative and summatives and whatever types of assessments you want, but there'll be part of that 25%. So we have four marking terms, each marking term will be worth 25% for final grade.
Okay, okay, got that, okay. So the second thing is, I noticed, you know, so the goal here is, let's see, where is that? Go-to, classroom instruction and assessment update. The first one is word language. It's teaching, the focus is teaching grammar, so I hope, I'm sorry, so I hope it's, what did I say? I should, I hope I can have a teaching opportunity there, have learning opportunity there. So it's really great for you to bring that here, because we have a lot of students have trouble using the right grammar. But I hope it's not just the goal for this year. It should be the standard goal for all the way for the English, standard English lessons. You know, that's really from my experience.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so you think it's time is up?
Yes.
So what about the other questions, if I wanted to ask about schedules, anything?
Any other questions? Yeah, you're certainly always welcome.
Yeah, should I go back there and come back? No?
So that's it for tonight. Any other questions, you can send through email.
Okay, I just say what, yeah, I just, I know, I just say one more sentence about the schedule over there for the big block, just one sentence. Okay, Diane?
I'm sorry, if I extend periods for one person, it's going to set a precedent for others, and just to be respectful of the time.
Yeah, just ten seconds for that one, okay.
Eileen, I'm going to ask, I'm currently the chair, I'm going to ask that you be respectful of that, and...
Okay, should I talk to you, Larry, later there? Okay, so we can speak there, okay. We can talk outside, okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we are at item 4.4 on the agenda, so are you, do you want to deliver your third-quarter report from there?
I think in the interest of time, I'll save the ambulatory, I'm stalling now waiting for the clicker. What a hypocrite. So third quarter, where did the year go? The material is in your packets, it includes my summary memo, the third-quarter financial reports, and this slide presentation. The results were discussed at a meeting of the budget subcommittee, and this is a very high-level presentation of where we stand. Overall, there was not a significant change from quarter two for the net results. That stability projected to year-end will form the basis for our budgetary transfer that I'll talk about at the end of this presentation. But you can see what we've projected relative to revenues and expenditures for the year, the total of those, and where we had projected at the end of quarter two. Significant differences in revenues from between quarters, I always say that revenues are really easy to predict in a region because you have the assessment, that's 90%, 90% of the rest is state aid. The one thing that has varied here in my time is investment earnings, and you can see that the projection is up in Q3 from Q2. I've been cautious up to now projecting investment earnings, but through three quarters, I'm comfortable extrapolating the variance of $231,000 over our budget of $100,000. So the bar graph is not the total, but it's the variance. And so we're right now projecting a variance, a positive variance in investment earnings of $231,000, and overall, almost $500,000. Expenditure variances from budget have crystallized further as expected at the end of three quarters. The finance department has begun the closeout process. We look at open purchase orders and determine what needs to be encumbered at year-end and what can be closed. There's a smaller positive variance than the second quarter, but it's still, we're still projecting about an $850,000 positive variance, which is just under 1% of the total budget. And you can see the major drivers of the variances in the categories that are presented on that bar graph. There's some notes about the items with significant budget-to-actual variances. I'm not going to read them, you can, you have this presentation in your materials, and so can look at them and digest them separately. So where do we project E and D will be at year-end? Or more correctly, certified as of July 1st? You can see we started with a little over $4 million. The estimated budget closeout for FY19 is the third-quarter projected variance that was in the first slide. We are, we've been discussing this now for about four months. The number has been out there that we look to potentially transfer $1 million to the newly-formed capital stabilization fund. Should we follow through with that? And I'm saying that we likely have the wherewithal to do that. We have committed $690,000 for use in the FY20 budget. All of those things taken into consideration give us a preliminary projection for July 1st, 2019, unadjusted E and D balance of 3.7 million or about 4.1%. It's less than we began at the beginning of the year, both in terms of dollars and percent, but it's within the four to four-and-a-half target that we've been discussing for the new E and D policy. And I will say that, well, what's, in terms of what could be adjusted, the DOR, when it certifies E and D, will look at the timing of transactions, and they make some adjustments. It shouldn't vary materially from this amount, but it could be up or down several tenths of a percent. So relative to the proposal to transfer $1 million or make a transfer into the stabilization fund, next Monday, Boxborough Town Meeting begins, and someday next week, it will come up, two-town meeting, the vote to establish the capital stabilization fund. Assuming that it passes, at your next meeting on May 23rd, we intend to present to the committee a proposal to make a transfer, a budget transfer from FY19 to the newly-formed stabilization fund, and it takes a two-thirds vote of this committee for it to happen. And of course, as has been discussed extensively, both towns' boards of selectmen will have the option to call a special town meeting within 45 days of the school committee vote. Keeping it short, that's all I have. So are there any questions?
Just have a quick question about the utility negative report, the projection. Can you talk a little bit more details about it?
You're talking about the comment, middle of that slide, negative projection.
Right, right, utilities, negative projection.
As I understand it, there was a problem in getting in sync the billings from the utility, and they did not do a good job, and there's been a lot of back and forth going on for quite some time for the capacity charges in the utility billing. And that was something that came to light between second and third quarter, and that's why I made note of it. It's unusual from the standpoint, it's a catch-up in what was billed by the utility, it's not going to drastically reduce our projection for the year.
Is it because of the contractor, you know, like, it's the contractor's responsibility or no? I mean...
It's their, I'm sorry.
Right, so if that's, if they're not doing a good job, should their insurance pay for it?
Well, their responsibility is to send us a correct bill, which they've done finally, and the bill was not correct once, as we had been paying it, and apparently it escaped detection because there was some stability on a month-to-month basis. But they came back to us and said, you know what, we overlooked this, it was extensively researched by J.D. and by Kate, the energy manager, and to my satisfaction, is we haven't paid it yet, but it was an error that needed to be corrected.
We usually don't talk about cash flow, but I was wondering, from the standpoint of the way in which, you know, revenues flow into the school system, do they flow in evenly through the year, or do revenues at certain points significantly exceed expenditures? And the reason for the question is, with respect to some issues like OPEB, you know, where we would theoretically, if we had cash available, be able to front-end load, you know, our contribution, which again, might have some merit depending on the expected return, you know, is there flexibility inside the cash flow to do that or not?
Well, there is that flexibility. The town, the district has an enviable financial position. A couple of things about that. If you could predict, John, that the market was going to take a significant bump on July 2nd, let's put all the, for two things, let's put all the money in on July 1st, but let me first go and drain my own savings account so I can do the same thing. But more seriously, we brought that up in the OPEB advisory meeting, and the advisor suggested a policy of dollar-cost averaging to guard against the flip side, which is a market correction on July 2nd, and we put our entire $900,000 at risk on the day before. So the strategy has been to maintain a quarterly funding of the OPEB liability to this point.
And because, of course, the future is always the most fun to talk about. With respect to revenue projections for FY20, the Senate now has moved forward with a budget proposal, and I was, first of all, let me make a comment that that Senate proposal includes what Governor Baker requested, which was tax on vaping. You know, I personally would rather see that as a nicotine tax than a vaping tax, but independent, that is a revenue source, so from a school perspective, more revenue means it's more likely that some of that will flow to the schools, so I think that's good. But the question for you is, relative to what we put in the budget, has any of your thinking changed about your state revenue projection for next year?
For next year, since we last spoke about it, the House budget bumped up to, from $20 to $30 of minimum aid, so that's flush with our budget for FY20. There were a couple of small adjustments with the final House budget, and of course, final is in quotes, because until both sides agree, nothing's out there. The Senate budget, though, and I don't know the why for this, but there was a pretty significant bump from a relative standpoint of charter reimbursement. It's only about $30,000, but it's double what had previously been allocated for the district. Of greater impact is what I saw today, and that is that revenue collections for the year for the state are running at a rate of almost $1 billion over. When has this happened? So I think that there could be some potential good news with things like the final reimbursement, transportation reimbursement, which is released in June, the final circuit breaker reimbursement for FY19, which is released in June. Things like that could be, could go to our benefit for FY19. For FY19, FY20, the budget process won't be over until June.
I think we all got an email today from another regional district and I can't find it right now, but it was requesting that, that we contact our state legislators by, I think, the 13th of, I'm not sure. It might even be the 13th of this month. Yeah. Yeah, to push for.
Letters to the editor by May 17th. There's a rally on the 16th.
Okay. So yeah, check your emails and act on it because this is the time to make the push at the state level. Thank you, John. Anyone else? Welcome.
Hi, I'm David Martin from Acton. I just have a quick question on, on what you said about the boards of selectmen of both towns have the option of calling for a town meeting vote after this committee would vote to transfer to the capital stabilization fund. What is that, what would that town meeting vote do? Confirm the transfer? Veto the transfer?
I can, I'll just jump in. So per mass general law, this is actually a process that's laid out in the legislation around regional district stabilization funds. And it's, the way it's worded in the law is basically the towns, each town has an opportunity to call a meeting within 45 days to disapprove of the budget transfer.
So basically veto.
Right. So if the board of selectmen felt uncomfortable with the budget transfer, they could actually call the town meeting and the town would vote to disapprove. The town could still vote to approve certainly. But if the towns don't take a vote, then it's automatically moves forward as an approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Our final presentation is Superintendent Light's End of Year Goals Report.
Just want to see if you're still here. So clearly I strategically positioned this on the agenda. So to, you know, really make sure we had the broadest audience that stayed with us. There's an extensive memo in your packet. Yeah. There is an extensive memo in your packet regarding the goals update. And you know, it's not my intent to go through all of that with you tonight, but what I'm hoping to do instead is just give you a few slides, a very broad overview of it. The way I organized the memo, just in case there's any, any questions or you haven't had an opportunity to look at it yet, essentially what I tried to do is a little bit more of a reflection and tell a story of the school year around the various goals. And then within that, embed a few selected pieces of evidence. I would not ever attempt to try and give you every piece of evidence of work that we did, either, you know, part of my two, two student learning and professional practice goals or on the district goals. The idea is not to flood you with a whole bunch of evidence. You know, what we've found through the educator evaluation process over time is that selected evidence is much more impactful if it's put within context than trying to just produce a lot of different documents that don't feel associated with the story. So that was the structure. I created it as hyperlinks within the document so you could click and kind of see how that supported the work. But I'll just take you through a broad overview of that now. And what I want to focus on at the end, what I tried to do as well, you know, evaluation is not about did someone or didn't someone do a good job? It's how can we continue to grow as educators and as individuals and professionals in our own practice? And so what I tried to do for not only each of the goals, but kind of in a broad overview at the end, was give you some sense of ways that I think I had some strengths, but also talk about ways that I think I can continue to become more effective over time. So with that said, and I, I know there's not a chance that you can read the yellow text, but that, trust me, that is actually the goal. But it's written in so many different places, you can access it. But what I wanted to talk about, this goal for student learning was really about my entry process and me getting a sense of the district and being able to continue the growth of our district moving forward for the betterment of our students. So that's what we talked about at the beginning of the year. And some of the things, you know, I had developed an entry plan and I don't know if you remember this, but probably the one-year anniversary of my first presentation to you is coming up in a, in a couple of weeks. I came to you last June and presented you with an overview of my entry process. Then throughout that process, one of the big first steps was coming back to you with the actual entry plan, which we talked about in one of the first meetings of the year. I tried to continue to provide you updates throughout the fall and into the early winter through the superintendent's updates portion of the meeting. And not only for you, but to keep the community apprised of my progress in the entry findings. I then returned to you in January, presented the report of entry findings with the major themes across the district. And we did a workshop to gather your input. The next steps for me in that entry process are to continue that same work we did with the administrative team and seek their input around major themes and what we want to tackle first. But then to work with the administrative team over the summer to complete a draft revision of the district's strategy and then return to you in the fall for some more feedback about that strategy. And then finalize our next set of goals for the district for the next, you know, three to five years this coming fall. So that's kind of the overview of that, that first step in the plan. I think, you know, I felt pretty successful in that step of the process because I, one thing that, that struck me afterward is I think people felt that it was a good reflection of the community. And it was really an opportunity for me to get out, meet people, hear about the issues, talk to our faculty, talk to our students, talk to our staff, talk to all of you within community members, and really think deeply about the trends and patterns to what I was hearing. So I felt like it's a good start. That work is certainly not done, but I think bringing the next version of the district's strategy to fruition is really the final step in that goal. Based on the timeline that I, I had set out originally, I did indicate that I felt I had met this goal, even knowing that there's some more work, we knew that the work would extend beyond one school year. So that was the kind of thinking behind that. In terms of my professional practice goal, this goal was really about my participation in the new superintendent induction program. And if you remember back originally when we talked, there were two major focal of that program. One is around the entry process and developing entry findings and then using those findings to develop the district's strategy for improvement. And then the other one was around helping the superintendent increase their skills in terms of instructional leadership. So what I tried to do, you know, I provided you some meeting attendance, but you know, that's not really all that exciting of evidence. The only meeting I did miss from content perspective was because the MSBA scheduled one of their meetings on the same day and I decided that the building project was maybe more important than one of the content days. I'll leave that to you after that. The, in terms of other evidence, certainly the entry findings play into that because that was a major component of the work of the new superintendent induction program. But then I also in the memo, provided you with a couple of links to give you a little perspective on what I focused on when I met with principals. A lot of the focus of my work with principals this year was on observing classrooms to develop a shared understanding of instructional practices that we saw in place throughout schools. We also did a lot of problems of practice and talking through what principals were thinking about. I make, one of my priorities was to be in schools and I was in just about every school every month of the year. I think there were a couple of exceptions that you can see in my calendar, so significant time spent in schools. But of that, it was really important for me to make sure principals felt they had time to talk to me about what they were struggling with as part of that superintendent-principal relationship development. The, I gave you some protocols for school visits. We also sometimes talked about assessments of students and there were other times that in specifically recently, we've been very focused on the development of school improvement goals for next year and talking about some of my expectations around goal setting and what goals might look at, what, excuse me, what goals might look like. And talking through how they were thinking about goals and developing goals with their various school improvement teams. So just to give you a little overview of that. I do not intend next year to continue with the new, I'll be in the new superintendent induction program. I don't think that needs to be a professional practice goal. In thinking about my work this year, I actually think what I'd like as a professional practice goal and intend to come back to you is something around communication with the broader community. I've really focused on communicating internally with our staff and communicating internally with our families, but I'd like to expand that and think more broadly about developing those relationships. So one example of that, I was just recently at the Acton Discovery Museum, meeting with the executive director and the chair of the board and doing a tour of that and starting to establish those relationships. But I want to continue to expand those relationships so that my influence as a superintendent continues to expand each year. One thing we are doing to that end, to begin kickoff that process, we are doing compiling an end of the year report where we'll give some snapshots of the district, certainly from a financial perspective and some highlights of the school year district-wide. And then for each school, we'll give some highlights of what took place over the year. We want to do it in a very interactive format that will not only publish online, but actually this first year, we're inclined to send that to the home of each resident in both Acton and Boxborough because what we'll also do is put out a call for signing up for a future email list where we can then send quarterly newsletters. So that's kind of the plan moving forward so you had a little bit of sense, again, not only of this goal, but what I foresee doing kind of next steps into the future. District goal number one, I'm not going to talk at length about everything we've done. Certainly, you know, we came to you with a mid-year update. I don't feel like I want to repeat any of that right now, given that we're going on 10 o'clock. But you know, start times were a major focus and since the information provided in the mid-year update, we also focused in on the transportation data. And if you remember, transportation was one of the major changes. We did commission a study to look at that and that had budgetary implications. So we came back to you, did a presentation, made some recommendations and ended up adding a couple buses as a result of that so that we could address some of the perceived issues that we uncovered through the study. We also, it did, we re, kind of re-resurrected the school wellness advisory committee this year. It hadn't met in a little bit of time. And they are scheduled to present to you, but just not before my presentation tonight. You will be seeing them two weeks from now for their end of the year update. So you'll be able to hear a little bit more. In terms of soliciting feedback from stakeholders, we have administered our homework and challenge success surveys. There are some additional planned activities during this school year where we are going to use our data inquiry team, which is a district-wide team comprised of a variety of stakeholders, to take a look at some of those root causes and recommendations for some of the themes and patterns that come up. And we will be coming back to you next fall with the results of those surveys. There just simply won't be time during the school year to present that information. In terms of homework policies and practices, again, everything from the mid-year update. And then in addition, we did complete the surveys. We're conducting the data inquiry team research into that in June and will be coming back next fall with any recommendations about how we're implementing the policy that you developed or if we feel there need to be some changes to that policy, we'd be able to discuss that as part of our processes next fall. You know, I think overall, as I think about this, supporting the social emotional needs of our students clearly continues to be a priority. You heard a little bit of that tonight. But that was also one of the entry themes that I discussed in my report of entry findings. That is something that I'd like to continue to prioritize, social emotional learning across the district. And as I indicated, you know, in our workshop and in the entry report, I'd like to think about how we can think of social emotional skills as teachable and that can be done proactively and really think about how do we have a continuum where we're at developing social emotional skills in a proactive stance so that, you know, one of the major outcomes for our students is being emotionally competent, you know, and having a high emotional intelligence. I think that's a really important skill as we move forward and something we want to be thinking about. Going from how do we put the supports in place to how do we take a proactive stance and make sure this is a priority to teach. District goal number two, a couple thoughts on that. This was around equity. So obviously I put again, mid-year update plus. One of the areas that we wanted to do is expand the diversity of our educator workforce. That was a, a really significant goal for us. I included in your packets, some of the hiring workshop slides. I didn't include everything because some of it was internal processes, but I included an overview that Marie had done with the team. So thank you for Marie for supporting my evaluation. But I thought it was just some insight because that's not work you would be able to typically see that the district leadership does. I also included a link to one of the diversity job fairs that we attended this year and a letter that Marie and I kind of co-authored to our staff outlining kind of why we're doing this as a goal. And our, our function in doing that was to be able to talk directly to our staff about the why and also to be able to provide some direct resources. I can tell you that in every final interview I do, I ask some questions about equity. And I've actually been using the recent incident at the junior high school as a challenge question for our candidates and have been asking candidates, if this happens, how will you start that conversation with your students and what's your role as an educator in teaching our students? And I can tell you, all of the candidates have come to me, have been extraordinarily well-prepared to be able to implement concrete strategies to address that with students. So I feel like this is, that's pretty good evidence that this is happening during our hiring process and we're prioritizing that. We don't have final data yet because we're only probably a quarter of the way into giving people final job offers. So hopefully we'll be able to give you some data about that next fall. Also, just a couple of other thoughts on this overarching goal. One of the things we have spent a lot of time this year talking about was educator evaluation and calibrating our own skills to make sure that regardless of who an evaluator is that watches teachers, we're seeing consistent things and we're honing our skills in terms of how we talk with educators about their own growth and improvement. That there's really no other function other than hiring that's more important than how we supervise and evaluate our staff. It's just incredibly important. And so, you know, we did a couple of different things. We've structured our leadership team meetings a little differently where we, every other leadership team since April, we, excuse me, since February, we have been going opposite weeks where every other week it's the assistant superintendent and I, meeting with our principals. And what we do is we spend time talking about educator evaluation. We watch some videos of teaching and learning and then we discuss those in small groups. We also did a district-wide presentation and Dana Lab, who presented earlier tonight, was awesome and led that for us to do some district-wide educator evaluation calibration with our entire team that included assistant principals, department heads and principals in central office. And we're actually forming an educator evaluation leadership team that can help us steer our work moving forward and continue that professional learning into future years. So just some action steps we're taking around making sure that we continue to build all of our capacity. We certainly can't help our educators if we don't continue to build our own capacity as supervisors. Seed training is continuing on as scheduled. That's something that's very exciting. Our whole district-wide leadership team now has received training with one exception, who is talking to you right now. But I am going to be doing that training with you when we do that at the end of June. So I'm very excited about doing that. We've continued to offer those workshops for all of our faculty and are continuing to send additional teachers to become leaders in that training program. I think in terms of my next steps around this goal, I'd like to think about how we expand our ideas about equity to be a broader theme of diversity, equity and inclusivity. I think that's kind of the, a lot of the current thinking around that, that really focusing on inclusive environments, which is not a new goal for the district. But I, and there's been a lot of work done. Don and Deb have been amazing in the work that they've done and they're starting to become recognized nationally for that. So I think that's, that's really important work. I just want to be more explicit that our goals are around all three of those areas. Certainly over the summer, we're going to be working on the district strategy and hope to revise that to include some new strategies, to continue to build our capacity as a district in those areas. But one of the action steps that I've been starting to announce and I'm going to propose to you, I'm actually starting a superintendent's advisory council or actually a series of them. And I want to start one for family and community members who are interested in helping us think creatively about our work around DEI. I also want to do a student advisory council and I've talked to Andrew and Larry. I'll certainly be doing something for grade seven through 12 students to be able to talk directly with me. And hopefully some of our other leadership team will participate in these as well to be able to hear directly from our students about their experiences. But then I, we also have started talking about whether we did a separate faculty advisory group or we invited our faculty to participate in the other two advisory groups. We're kind of leaning toward that other model because we want to continue to have our faculties, faculty be leaders in this work. But certainly we're going to expand our efforts to reach out. out and hear more stories from people, and also be able to incorporate some additional ideas and community action in the work we do. Goal number three, the mid-year update plus, this is the capital plan, and it's also the building project. You know, I think, in terms of the capital plan, I think we had tremendous success in passing that capital plan, I feel really positive about the work that was accomplished. Obviously, we formed the capital subcommittee this year, and that committee did a lot of the work toward this, we did a number of presentations at various town boards on Saturdays, we went to FinComs, we went to board the selectmen, we did outreach, Diane and I ended up going and speaking at the Legal Women Voters event, so anyone who'd listen, we'd talk to about the capital plan, we had tremendous support at Acton Town Meeting, we're hoping for the same at the Boxborough Town Meeting. We also were able to, hopefully, and you'll be talking about this later tonight, but implement two reserve policies that speak not only to our overall reserves and E and D, but speak specifically to stabilization fund, that was a real positive. The building project, the PSR Preferred Schematic Report has now been submitted to MSBA, we, it was delayed, I'll be very clear about that, you know, that's a little bit frustrating for me, I wish I could say, you know, we batted a thousand, we didn't, but I feel like we're still on target for the building project to be completed on the same timeframe as when we started this whole process. It was a hiccup in the middle, it was not a major delay. Next steps, you know, certainly we need to implement the capital plan, I'm already working with our Amy Bizowitz through the technology department, but also our web designer, because we're looking at an interactive reporting system that we can have on our website, so that quarterly, we can update the community right on our website around the progress we're making in the capital plan, including dates that different projects were completed, the actual costs of the various projects, if we get grant funding that offsets any project, that can be reported outright on the website, and we can actually have this running history of how we're implementing the capital plan, I think that will be a really nice communication vehicle back to the community, and hopefully feel like, people feel like they spent their money well at the end of that. We're also proceeding in the building project into schematic design, which is just the next phase, which is a more detailed version of that. This will lead toward the final approval from MSBA, which we anticipate in mid to late October of next year at their board meeting, that's the board meeting we've been targeting now, which would put us on target for town votes at town meeting and ballot elections next mid-December is what we're targeting. We were hoping for, originally we said it was going to be December, then we had moved the timeline up to maybe target November, and we're back to December, so, again, overall project, we're still on schedule, so that's kind of the, the overall update. I wanted to leave you with some reflections, I'm assuming this is probably, well, it's visible, but just some, some areas of, I thought, relative strength for me as a first year superintendent, and then maybe some areas that I thought I should continue my own growth, or some of these are just next steps. I think some effective things, or things that went well this year, I thought we did a nice job establishing an effective school committee superintendent relationship for a first year, developing a sense of trust with the leadership team and staff, I did do some surveys to be able to solicit some feedback from the leadership team, that was on target for what I would hope to accomplish in the first year. Being visible in schools and classrooms, I think was successful for me this year, completing a comprehensive entry process and the, through the entry plan and findings, that gives us a framework for next steps for the district. Beginning to set the direction for future years' work, I thought was successful this year, and really working toward tighter alignment between the overall district strategy and how schools align within that framework, and I think that is an ongoing discussion we'll have about this idea of loose tight leadership, and as a district figuring out what we need to be tight about in the overall vision for where we go, and allowing schools and individual classrooms the flexibility to operate within that, so that they're really thinking about what are the needs of my students that are in front of me as a school and also at the classroom level. That's that idea of clear alignment of strategy, it's not making sure everyone's doing everything at the same time, I just want to be clear about that. Communicating with families, I thought went well this year, we did get some nice feedback, people appreciated the regular superintendent's updates, that I thought was an overall positive as well. And then, looking ahead, I also think I can continue my own growth through some of the following strategies, communicating more broadly with the community and thinking of ways we can do that. I already talked about an end of the year report, thinking of quarterly newsletters, but also trying to make myself more visible and continue to build relationships within the community. I want to finish the work of, with the district leadership team to revise our strategy and bring that back to you for feedback and then approval. I want to think about how we continue to develop our various leadership teams, we have several leadership teams within the district, I want to think about how do we constantly keep the focus on, every team needs to be a high-performing team and exhibit all of the characteristics of high-performing teams. That's certainly something we can talk about as, you know, with our relationship when we hit the school committee retreat, but also with our internal leadership teams, I'm doing a lot of the same work. I also want to, on a personal level, develop my own skills even more in supervising and evaluating our principals and central office staff, that's something that's new to me as a superintendent, you only do it in this role, so I've certainly evaluated teachers for my whole career, but I want to continue to hone my skills kind of at that next leadership level. And then developing and implementing strategies to solicit feedback from all the various stakeholders in the district, and I talked about the, you know, kind of DEI advisory groups, that's one strategy, but I want to think more broadly about other ways that I can do that, so. With that said, I hope that's a little bit of an overview, it's certainly not everything that was in the memo, but I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
I would just say, I really appreciated the memo as well as your summary, in particular the links, and, and really for things, some of them we know, we've seen, some of them we don't see as much, so, for example, the work around hiring diverse staff, you know, that really gives us into insight that we don't see, and to me, that's one of the hardest things is to evaluate you on some things that we don't actually see you do, and so, I found this so helpful, I love the links, and it's all there, I used to dig through all my files in the past, so this is fabulous, yeah.
Thank you. District goal number two, I know, it's your professional development number two, hang on, hang on, I gotta find it here.
Professional practice goal?
Yeah, that's the one, yep. So, there was, what, I'm, I'm, I'm very happy with performance, I, I echo Mary's assessment of the, of the, of the memo and all the supporting materials. The one thing that I'm, I was a little disappointed with this year is, is the outreach, and, and I was going to view that as an opportunity of growth that I was going to dump a lot of fertilizer on, but, what I'm realizing though, as I say that, it, it's not really a reflection on the superintendent, that's really a reflection on the committee, and, but I really appreciate that in your next steps, you've shifted gears from, from the superintendent training to the outreach, and, and what I, I would offer to help you in a way to, to, with, with the broader outreach, and the reason why I'm, I was a little disappointed this year, and, and it's not a reflection on you, it's more a reflection on the, on the committee, is that these, these years are very important years where we're going to be asking the community for, for a lot, and, and I, I really think that this was an up, this was a, this year was a chance for us to kind of make the connections to those who don't actually have kids in the, in the district, because they vote too, and, and so I think it's that important that I'm, I'm going to offer to, to do what I can to help, help support you in that, in that effort.
Since I got a get-out-of-jail-free card for this year, I want to talk in a, in a forward sense, and I particularly want to follow on what Paul just said, because I, I think it is extremely important, I think that a lot of times people think about the school committee in relationship to the schools and the educational program, and the responsibility of school committee members is absolutely to every individual in the community, and that is shared by the superintendent, so I was very excited to hear about your plans, you know, to reach out to everyone in the community and build that communal relationship, because that, I think, is the appropriate work of the superintendent and of the school committee, and it relates to the other point that, that Paul made, which is that the school committee needs to look hard at the revenue question, I mean, we know, you know, when we put forward a budget, what that represents in terms of local property taxes, and we need to understand, you know, what that means to the community, and, and make sure that we found an appropriate balance. There will always be more things that can be done, there will always be an argument that we'd like to add this, or this, or this, that will always have to be balanced against, realistically, this is what the community wants to spend on this now, and it is absolutely the job, you know, of the school committee and the superintendent to see that full question, and, you know, although the regional school district still operates through town meeting, if you think about where the substantive discussion can really take place about having found that balance, it's really here at school committee meetings, it's not on town meeting floor.
Mary. I just want to respond a little bit to the outreach piece, and I do think it is an area of growth, but I also don't want to ignore what actually has happened, and so I think Peter has done significant work in outreach to community, other board members, and department folks, and I think that's a critical first step in coming into this role, and, you know, a reasonable expectation for this year, and although the building committee has a great deal more outreach to do, some of our early forums had people from all ages, not just parents, so that we are, you know, early stages of reaching out to folks and absolutely intentions to do more, so.
I want to remind committee members that this end of year goals report triggers the evaluation process, it's, which is going to be due in written form to me on May 28th, so look for the template in your box in the next, say, 24 to 48 hours, and then you can just start, start your, get your pencil out, or your type, your keyboard, and those are, those, I'll send a memo out to remind you of the timeline, but they, they are due back to me on the 28th, and at our June 13th school committee meeting, you'll have access to the composite evaluation. So, that concludes our reports, I'm hoping that the rest of the meeting will kind of flow quick, more quickly, we have some, we have several votes coming up and just some brief reports, so we'll just try to get through this as in a, in an efficient manner as possible, so. Item 5.1 is a recommendation to authorize the superintendent to improve fundraising in anticipation of accepting the gifts from the ABRHS football boosters donation regarding the, the equipping the fitness center there, and the Blanchard outdoor learning space, so we, we have, so you're, we had presentation on the Blanchard outdoor learning space, and Peter spoke to this issue, do you want to say anything else, or?
Say a couple of things. So, there was a memo in your packet outlining this, in the packet, I gave a quick overview of Blanchard, but I spoke a little bit more toward the athletic boosters, the football boosters are proposing to equip the fitness center at the high school with all new fitness equipment, I spoke to that in the memo, happy to take any questions about that, but again, this is, I'm seeking your approval to authorize fundraising, because later we'll be coming to you to accept the gifts, and I just don't want that to be a surprise with these kind of numbers.
This is a vote or is this a sense? We propose to vote.
So, I'm going to move to approve, do you want to do them together, or do you want them individual?
Let's do them individually.
Move to approve raising funds for the outdoor learning space at Blanchard.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions, motion passes. Do I hear a motion for item 5.1.2?
I move to approve raising funds for the fitness center at the high school.
Second.
So, this would be for the Blanchard outdoor learning space, would it? No, they did that, oh, okay, sorry, I'm zoning out, okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. We have several first reads for policies, so I'm going to hand it over to you, Amy.
Okay, so, there are three policies here for first read, two of them are related, are financial policies, one is the reserves policy, a reserves policy, and one is a policy around the capital stabilization fund, just if it, in anticipation of it passing Boxborough Town Meeting. And just a quick reminder, this, these all came about because the budget subcommittee, the budget subcommittee back in April developed a first, a draft of both a reserve policy and a policy around stabilization, both of these policies then went to the policy subcommittee where we worked to, worked on some input, then that, after that iteration, both of these policies were taken to Boxborough FinCom and Acton FinCom, received, we received feedback from both of those boards, and April 30th, the budget subcommittee met again, reviewed and incorporated where we felt we needed to, that feedback, and then that afternoon, the policy subcommittee got together and met and reviewed both of the policies and did a little bit of tweaking, so, what you have before you is a first read for the full committee in your packet, and I'm just going to leave it at that, and ask that if you have any feedback, if you would please send it to me by a week from Monday, so that gives you kind of a week, but I guess questions also now, go.
I'd like to make one comment relative to the reserves policy, the upper limit is set at four and a half percent, I would like to see the upper limit set at eight percent, I am of course well aware that MGL would cap that at five percent. The reason for that is that if we could just do anything we wanted to, we would not be writing a reserve policy that was capped at five percent, operating as a regional school district, and it causes us to do other things. So, as a way to signal that we would rather that the MGL be loosened up for regional school district, I'd like to see this read eight percent, and mechanistically, you could do that by including language that was something like, E and D will be maintained between four and eight percent, or to the upper limit of MGL if MGL limit is less than eight percent. So, there is a way to actually be compliant with the law, yet send out a signal that says this is not where we want to be operating.
Mary. I think that's an interesting concept, and interesting to be signaling to master general law, however, I think our FinComs would get very nervous with that, I, they're a little, you know, concerned now with the capital stabilization fund and this, and I think if you were to consider that, you'd have to, I would recommend running it by both FinComs first before you vote on it here again, because that's not how we presented it to them. Okay, thank you, I'm going to try to take that back, I think we have a budget meeting before our next, oh, okay, well, all right, I'll further discussion, okay, is that it? All right, so now, for the third policy that we're introducing tonight, and that is addressing the, the policy around the annual reorganizational meeting, and the thinking around this change is that we typically vote in a new chair and vice chairs, the first meeting after Boxborough Town Meeting, which means that that's, that is the first meeting for any new Boxborough members, and then everything kind of reshuffles, and we, all of a sudden, right in the middle of the year, we start off with a new chair and vice chairs. So, the proposal in the policy would be that we vote those positions, but the, the individuals don't actually take those positions until August the 1st, so that you have a period of transition where the current chair and the future chair can meet, and there's actually some mentoring discussions, the, it helps kind of with the transition when we start talking, when we start doing our summer workshop, so you have kind of, you can have input from both. So you have kind of, you can have input from both. But then on August 1st, you would see both of those three, all three of those position, those new, those individuals take those new positions. So that's, again, this is a first read. So if you have any feedback or comment, please send it to me by a week from Monday. Okay.
I'm sorry, but I think we need a little direction from the committee around the reserves policy. I think the committee and the budget sub have been talking for about a year, about four to four and a half percent. We put it in a policy. Do you want us to put it on hold to consider going to eight percent? Or do you want to leave it the way it is?
What's the sentiment around the table here for that? Are we sending a message to the state legislature? John?
I, I would at least like to see the policy allow to go up to five percent. I see no particular merit in having a policy that's four and a half percent, you wind at 4.6, and now all of a sudden you're not in compliance with your policy. That doesn't make any sense to me. So I do think it actually should go up to five, sort of, no matter what. But, you know, I leave it to other people to decide, you know, how much speculative.
Adam?
You know, some of the conversation we had around that was that with the stabilization fund, there's, there is a floodgate that we could open to move funds so that we didn't exceed that. And I thought that, you know, part of the other reason for the four to four and a half was to show to the communities that we're being, you know, conservative. I don't think is the right word, but we're wisely using the monies that come out of those assessments for the towns and that we're not wildly over assessing and then keeping that in our reserve funds. So, I mean, I think the four to four and a half made sense to me. I don't think that this, while they're, and I apologize for missing the portion about raising the number as a message to the legislature. I don't think that, I would rather keep the message to the local communities that we respect the money and the assessments that we're getting from them and that there are probably other ways that we could advocate for raising that limit with the, with the state.
Tessa?
I agree, and having sat in on the presentation of this, at least to our FinCom, I think that there's a lot of trepidation around this capital stabilization fund because there's a loss of control in terms of the towns feeling like we can, we can't, but that we can just do whatever we want with that money. And I think that the more we send a clear message, like Adam was saying, that we're being, you know, financially prudent and, you know, physically prudent, and that we're doing things with their needs in mind too, in terms of the assessments and how we're looking at the money that we're saving versus spending, that, that I don't think that the, that the state is looking at our policies. You know, I mean, I think that Adam said, as Adam said, there's other ways that we could advocate for that kind of change in their policies.
So not, not having had, you know, been party to the meetings that culminated into this policy, when I saw the 4.5, I immediately turned to, okay, this is, this is a product of the discussion with FinComs and having to do with stabilization. And I thought, well, you know, okay, that sounds fair. You know, and I, and I do think that when I, when I heard that other districts around the country can go up to 20%, you know, I'm willing to have the conversation. It's just that we're, we're pretty close to finalizing policy. And I just don't see that conversation as being part of this policy discussion. It's, it might be for a longer term type, type discussion. So I'm, I'm okay with, with the 4.5 because I think we need to get buy-in from both FinComs and Board of Selectmen. And if we want everyone to be playing in the sandbox, this is the work that we're doing to show that we're, we're here in the sandbox, ready, ready to play.
I also think that since this is a new policy and this is what we've talked about, this is a good range. And then if we find that we're bumping up against it and we really feel we need to go to five, then we would have data to show our FinComs why we needed to do this. And we could then talk to them about it. And you can always change your policy, so. No, I was just going to ask then, do you, does the committee want, do you want to, us to put this on hold? Or do you feel comfortable moving forward or saving this for a different night?
I'm getting the sense that, that we want to move forward with it, but let me get Michael's input.
Sorry, before you ask that question, so I want to, I have a question for Dave, right? I remember that when we talked about this, you know, the, we want to keep what percentage of E and D? And I remember that, maybe I'm wrong, but we were talking, you were talking about, you know, the, our, what's it called? That rating, that financial rating, what's that, what's that name? What's that? Right, right, bottom rating. So was it related to that? I mean, if we keep, like, say, for, what's the difference between, you know, the four and a half versus eight percent?
Little bit of apples and oranges, I think, relative to the question. Although I do suspect that what John's saying is to be able to show the ratings evaluators that, hey, if we could, we'd, we'd put eight percent away in our, in our reserves. All of other things being equal, the rating agencies are going to evaluate us higher if we have more money put away than if we have less. So Witness several years ago, the, the district was downgraded because it only had a million dollars. It only had one point something percent of E and D, which is precipitously close to zero. If you're close to the legal limit, I would maintain you're as good as you're going to get. And there are only two districts in the state evaluated by Moody's better than Acton-Boggsboro. Staring and Poor's were rated AAA, as are the, as are the towns of Acton and Boggsboro.
So John, there is a venue for sending that message to the state, and that is to write a resolution and submit it to MAS C for their November Resolutions Committee, if you want to pursue that.
Yes, I think there are, obviously there are a number of things related to regional school districts, and this would be one of those things that would be appropriate. So, yeah, I, and I'm fine with this discussion, notwithstanding that I wouldn't hold you to the four and a half because I do believe that you will violate your policy and to no point would you be out of bounds.
Just, I was. So you have enough feedback? You feel like you have enough feedback on that? Okay, school building committee update?
So I'll just say, as Peter said, PSR was submitted. There are some great designs and conceptual ideas on the website, so go look for it.
Looking for a vote this evening to recommend to approve revisions to the school building committee members' titles, specifically Mary Brolin and Bob Evans to the title of community members. Did someone make the motion? Yes, so do I hear a motion?
I'll move to change Mary Brolin and Bob Evans' titles to those of community members.
Is there a, is it pertinent to this, this issue of changing their titles? Sure.
What, what's the difference between the community members and other members?
I'm currently a school committee member on the membership. And I won't be as of May 21st.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nope, didn't, just saw it.
I just wanted to make sure that I just, when the subcommittee was formed, was there any requirement on the number of school committee members who needed to be part of the committee? There's not, okay, that's, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. So I believe it was on the 11th that we, I requested, those of you who might be interested in serving on a debt strategy committee for the new school building project, submit in writing your, your application or your qualifications. This, this is a committee that's going to just meet a couple of times in the fall to explore options in the bonding for the new school building. Did you want to add anything to that? So this is a multi-stakeholder group that will involve representation from both FinComs, both town, the treasurer for the district, Dave, you'll be on that committee. I believe, Peter, you'll be on that committee as well?
Dave is actually going to lead this one.
Ah, okay. And I, we requested two school committee members. So I'm going to announce that, that Michael Bo and John Peterson will both be represented in the school committee on this. Thank you very much. Okay, item 6.3 is, in your packet, you'll find a draft schedule of meetings. We have, we have suggested July 16th for the July workshop. It's still, we need, still need to confirm that all members at this time have said they can attend on any of three dates that week in July, as well as on Tuesday, August 6th. So if your plans change and you have a conflict, could you please email Beth and CC me? So we can pin down that date for the July workshop. Okay?
On the draft calendar for next year, as I think about this and I look at the time tonight, one of the challenges that we faced this year was we had a significant period of time around the town meetings where we were not meeting on that bi-weekly basis, and it was kind of interrupted and we had large gaps. What that caused is that agenda items that came up that weren't necessarily in the plan but needed to be presented, like the ESS program tonight, the Blanchard plan that you saw tonight, they're all getting pushed into very few meetings, which is causing this agenda to expand and the meetings to go to this hour. I would actually suggest that we look at that, that draft calendar again and think about adding at least one more meeting back in that might have gotten deleted this year.
I was going to ask if we could just put this off to the next meeting so that we can then have a better discussion about it because, I mean, I think I'm pretty fried.
I wasn't.
No, no, okay.
I was just saying.
No, I, I didn't think so, but I just thought, can we just push it off until the next meeting to make, even to do a vote or look at it, discuss it? Okay.
So we will also be discussing at the next meeting probably the venue. There is consensus among you to move the venue permanently over to the administration building. So I wanted to proceed with that. I met today with the folks at Acton TV, and they, we were looking at the MOU that they have with the town. There's a question regarding whether or not, because we've regionalized, if we are still included in that MOU. And there's also an issue of the cost, which is significant to outfit that space. They have asked us to share that cost, and these are really preliminary discussions. So I want to, I want to come back to you with more information on this. But I also wanted to let you know that this is, that there is consensus to move. So it's still up in the air, but I'm, I'm very pleased that everyone likes that space. And hopefully we'll be able to move there in September. So I will, I'll keep you updated as, as I know more. Statement of warrants. Okay, there are eight warrants on the agenda now being circulated. So I'm going to try to talk really, really fast, like those commercials, like. Mentor warrants 19-021, 19-022, 19-022 PR, and 19-023 PR in the total amount of $4,224,812.07. And student activity fund warrants 19-021 for Blanchard and 19-022 for the senior high in the total amount of $43,257.53. And payroll warrants P1922 and P1923 in the total amount of $5,017,713.87. Finally, we have a consent agenda. I'm going to read off the items. Okay. So Beth, I have a question for you. If we postponed this to the next meeting, would we still be in compliance?
Not in compliance.
Not, okay. So does it? You are, okay. All right, so we will keep these as part of the consent agenda. Has anyone, everyone had time to look? No, I'll read them down to say hold, if you want to hold them. Okay, so the minutes of the 3/21/19 school committee meeting? As amended, thank you. Minutes of the 4/11/19 school committee meeting? As amended. Policy AC, this is a second read, notice of non-discrimination. This would be a recommendation to approve that any policy that includes this clause be updated with a link to policy AC. Policy JFABD, students who are homeless, enrollment rights and services. Policy JFABE, this is a new policy, educational opportunities for military children. And policy JFABF, this is also new, educational opportunities for children in foster care.
Move to approve the consent agenda items that were not held.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Okay, file JFABD, this is students who are homeless. Do you want to address your comments to all three? Because I think it's the same comment, John, so go ahead.
Yes, thank you. It, it really is the, the same comment. One of the questions that always comes up with respect to policy is where is the line between policy and procedure? And as I read these, you know, quite detailed policies, which included things, including an appeals process, you know, it felt to me like there were things that were procedure-like in there. And there were some other language that I was concerned with. There's the use of the word immediate, which I'm not quite sure what it means. And then in one place in the foster policy, it says, we would enroll the students in a new school right away. So that kind of language is just problematic in a policy statement. I think, you know, at a very high level, all of these policies, you know, look the same to me. They're like criteria for enrollment, just what does it take to be enrolled? So one way to be enrolled is to be living in Acton or Boggsboro. Another way to be enrolled is to be a homeless person who qualifies, or a military person who qualifies, you know, or someone in foster care who qualifies. And it feels to me like those things integrated, you know, in the same sense that the non-discrimination thing is like, no, we just want to talk about that once and carry it through. That would give us a much better framework. So having said all of that, I do understand from speaking with Dawn that there's some need to have this done tonight. So while I personally am going to vote no, I'm perfectly comfortable with everybody else voting to approve these policies as is, recognizing that I don't think we should be doing this going forward. Having policies of this type, I, I think we need to use these or some policies like these to have a better discussion about how policy interacts with procedure so that we can, you know, in a harmonized way deal with it. And then, you know, I would like to see the policy subcommittee come back at this question next year and see whether or not, you know, a real policy could be written that says, this is what takes to enroll the school committee, and there are different groups of students, and this is how they get treated. And then there are administrative procedures which deal with some, you know, details that are unique to military people or homeless people or other categories.
Dawn, do you want to speak to?
Yes, I actually agree with the statement completely. I think we really blur the lines in a lot of our policy and. I think we really blur the lines in a lot of our policy and procedures. And I think a simple statement around students, under the Educational Stability Act, students who may fall into these categories are ones that we're committed to enrolling and supporting in all the ways that we need to do. And then allowing, the issue with this is that anytime you put this much in a policy, it has to come back to you all for a review and an approval, when sometimes like the state right now is saying, we want you to do this quickly. The other thing I think that's problematic from my point of view is that these were actually based on MASC policies. And so when our state association is saying, these are policy examples, and we had to actually go out for legal advice, if you recall, because it didn't actually contain all the things that the ESSA requires us to have in it. So our state, you know, your state association isn't even keeping up necessarily with policy, and I think they maybe inadvertently are sort of contributing to that as well.
Adam?
Yeah, mine was, is a quick question. My understanding was that we created these policies as a result of needing a program review. And I guess my question would be, if we parsed out those components that were policy and that could be procedure, would we still be in compliance with the program review?
So it's interesting because as I went back and looked at the desk review process and checklist that I'm going to have to comply with here shortly, they intersperse policy, protocol, procedure, process, they use all these P-words and they're sort of all mixed together. So I was like, hmm, well, that's not really clear. So I think as long as they see it somewhere written, I think they'll be okay with it.
Amy?
So do we have to approve these tonight?
I can't tell you that.
No, I'm just saying, do we, are you on a deadline where if we, if we take this back to the policy subcommittee and have them parse out pieces, is that going to put you, is that going to put us in an issue? Or should we go ahead and try to vote the policy and then revisit it next year? I mean, I'm really, is that, yeah, okay, no.
I really don't care. I've had to upload some of them already and I just take off the approved date at the bottom and.
Okay, so we can postpone, we can actually have this conversation in policy or, yeah, go ahead.
Do you mind if I, I'm sorry. So in policy sub, we're very careful to sort of do what you're saying. Say, this is policy, this is the level at which policy should be, these are procedures, and do them hand in hand. This all came about in preparation for the coordinated program review as a requirement, and they do say that must have a policy that includes all of this. So if you go through our policy book, you'll see the bullying prevention policy is a good example. There's a health policy. The ones that have a ton of detail are the ones that are required by the Department of Ed for the coordinated program review, and these fall into that category. If we were to put it on hold and go say, we can keep this in policy, those in procedure, we'd have to work with the Department of Ed to make sure we're in compliance. They were due May 1st, and so we uploaded them in anticipation of a vote. We can do it, but I think it's going to take a while and we have one or two meetings left this year.
So we need to vote, we should vote this.
Can I correct, can I correct that? So we, they extended our deadline a little bit more and then they added an additional deadline for the Ed stability to, I think it's like June 5th or something. So we actually have a little bit more time. I don't think it would be that difficult to parse out policy and procedure. And like I said, when I reviewed this, it talks about, it literally uses like policies and protocols, and then it calls them processes and procedures in another place. I, I'm happy to look at it more closely, but.
So I'm asking, can we, can we postpone this then? Because.
Dawn, these were reviewed by both Desi and our attorneys, so.
No, I don't want to start over, but.
I'll be honest, I would recommend, I guess my recommendation right now is that you vote the policy.
Okay, okay.
And then we can take our time with revisions and think about how we want to proceed with it. I agree with the philosophy behind what you're saying, John. I just don't want to not have these in place for that interval.
Michael?
I have a question for, just to follow up what you said, Peter. So are you saying that you recommend the committee to approve this policy, assuming that there will be amendments in the discussion when it come for the approval again later on?
So what I'm recommending is that the committee approve all three of these policies tonight, knowing that they, as written, they've been reviewed and approved by both the Department of Education and our attorneys to meet the legal requirements of the laws that were required to have these policies. I think if we want to then later review them, we can certainly open that up and have a robust discussion about it that isn't time constrained, and I think that's a healthier way to go about it.
And how, you know, how to reopen that? I mean.
So Michael, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to have, ask you to just delay that. We'll, we'll take it up. I'm not, you know, we'll address it, just, just not now. I'd want to get these policies voted on. Mary?
So I'm going to move to approve Policy JFABD, Students Who Are Homeless, Enrollment Rights and Services.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. John, John Disney. Any abstentions? Motion passes.
I'll move to approve Policy JFABE, Educational Opportunities for Military Children.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion passes.
And I'll move to approve Policy JFABF, Educational Opportunities for Children in Foster Care.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Quickly draw your attention to some items and FYI, I just want to acknowledge the donation to support the purchase of T-shirts applied to our seniors for their Community Service Day by the high school. And Boxborough Town Meeting is Monday, so we'll see you there. Are we going to get a text or something or about what time to show up? Okay, and, yes. There's a special town meeting first. I also want to draw your attention to the invitation to the annual retirement celebration on May 30th at 3:15. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Good night.
Close vote?
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
I think we need to come back. Just to say, thank you, everyone. Sorry about the late.